Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 13th City Commission Meeting. Before we get the meeting going, we'll have Porter O'Neil, our Communications and Creative Director, Creative Resources Director, say a few words about the operation of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I just want to share some housekeeping items for this hybrid meeting. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel. The public chat function is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. When you are not participating in the meeting, please mute your microphone. When you are participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you are not participating in the meeting, please turn your video off. You will still be able to hear the meeting. You can turn your video back on when you are participating. Turning your video off when you are not participating allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. If you have any trouble, please send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute microphones and/or turn off people's video to minimize distractions. And now I'll return the meeting to Mayor Finkeldai.
Thank you, Porter. And now we'll have Sheri Reidman, our City Clerk, talk about the public participation process in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Just going to again outline how public comment will be facilitated for tonight's meeting. When public comment is sought on an item, the mayor will first call on those participating in person. Individuals wishing to provide public comment should approach the podium following social distancing and safety protocols. Participants who are required to or choose to wear a mask may remove their mask while making remarks at the podium. Please state your name before speaking, and comments will be limited to three minutes. The mayor will then call on those participating virtually. Individuals providing public comment via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. The raise hand function may appear in different places on your Zoom menu depending on the device you are using and which version of Zoom you have. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute and state your name. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. The city reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder during the meeting. Does any commissioner wish to change the agenda, or I'd look for a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nanda, seconded by Commissioner Larson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. To begin, does any commissioner wish to pull an item off the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull B-7C.
Any other commissioners? Any member of the public like to pull an item off the consent agenda? Okay.
Stratford Water Tower Park project.
Okay. Make sure I find the number here.
Mayor, that's B-4B.
There it is. B-4B. Do you have a different item or the same item?
Same item.
B-4B.
Okay, excellent. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to pull any item off the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand using the raise your hand function. We'll let Sheri know, and she'll call upon you.
Mayor, there are no other items pulled.
Thank you, Sheri. I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda besides the two items that have been pulled.
Move to approve the consent agenda, excepting items B-4B and B-7C.
Motion by Commissioner Nanda, seconded by Commissioner Larson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five to zero. The first item pulled from the agenda is B-4B on the Water Tower Park. There's three people who wanted to do that, so I'll call upon each of you. You have three minutes. Whoever wants to come first?
Thank you so much. My name is Lynn Segabrick. I am the home directly across from Water Tower Park at 1647 Oxford. I am here today to make a plea to you to table the instigation of this project and the progression of it, given the fact that we know the City Commission charged the planning commission with having a conversation with the neighborhood prior to implementation of this project. That has not been attempted in any way, shape, or form. We have emailed among our neighbors most of the day today and yesterday to confirm this. It has not been undertaken. No dates have been floated. So that condition has not been met. I should probably also let you know that Planning Commissioner Leah Morris sent a letter to a Realtor who happened to forward it on to one of the members of our Neighborhood Commission, our Neighborhood Group, who has been in constant contact with you all since the beginning of this project's discussion. She claims in this that there was conversation with the neighborhood, and therefore Black and Beach is requesting an extra $41,000 plus because of the neighborhood input. There hasn't been any neighborhood input. So that needs to be clarified. I know that you all have the integrity to want public input, and so far, it has been denied every step of the way. And I am pleading with you because of the miscommunication that has taken place, the exorbitant cost of this project, and what my architect friend in Kansas City, who is head of a design team, tells me will be astronomical increases in material costs to table this until a better time and until conversation could take place with those of us who are so directly impacted. My property value is going to decrease by $100,000. Thank you for your consideration. I hope you will listen to us and pull this. Thank you.
Regina, you're welcome to go next.
Hi, I'm Regina Kraus. I just urge you to remove this item from your consideration until there are more meaningful communications with the neighborhood. A project of this import, I think, should have started with neighborhood participation, and instead, we were pulled in near the end of design, namely by Commissioner Larson, reaching out to our Neighborhood Association. So the design team never really initiated communication with us to begin with. This project's site is located in a dense, long-established residential neighborhood. We take great care among one another on small residential projects. If someone's adding a garage, we have a committee who reviews that, and we act as liaisons between neighbors to open communication and, you know, kind of keep us all on the same team and to not make moves that negatively impact one another. So we ask the same of the city. Instead, this project's being treated as if it's being placed on an open site, like the tower that was just added a few years back. I don't know the name of it, but it's in West Lawrence, just off of Sixth Street. It's in an open field where there may be a neighborhood developed there eventually, but it can respond to the impact of that tower being there before the neighborhood was developed. We instead have long been present, and this tower will plop down in the middle of our established neighborhood. That said, this request for increased engineer's design fee of $41,000 approximately, that's just a small drop in the bucket of, I think, the consequential costs of this project to the neighborhood, to the quality of life where we are. I think we could have saved by taking a more neighborhood-inclusive approach from the beginning. This project could be exciting. It's necessary, we understand. It could be an opportunity. We're spending a lot of money. The park needs some attention. Yes, there will be a water tower in the park, but it could have been an opportunity to make something that will contribute to the community. But that's not what we're looking at right now. The adjustment's being made at this level by the engineering team. It's, I hate the term, but it's like lipstick on a pig is what it comes down to. It's not really going to change the heart of the project. The project needs closer study, careful study, meaningful neighborhood engagement because of its location within an established residential neighborhood and its job as a landmark for Lawrence as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before my three minutes start, I'd like to request to distribute this to the commissioners. It's a QR code to an online petition that has 349 signatures at this moment to try to stop the Water Tower Park project.
That's in three days.
All right. So my name is Ray Segabrick. I am from Lawrence originally. I'm a physician, and I work in Kansas City. And this park's been really dear to our family. My grandpa founded that area, and all those beautiful, enormous trees, ten of which or more are being proposed to be destroyed under the current plan, didn't exist at that time, but they are beautiful now. Every day I go by, I look, and I see all the squirrels playing around, and the birds, and beautiful sounds and sights. It glows orange at night, and there's also foxes and possums that share it at night. Could I get a show of hands how many of the commissioners have spent over 30 minutes there over the last six months? Commissioner Larson, thank you. Yet, the rest of you, besides Commissioner Larson, presumed to order its destruction at the last meeting when this was discussed. Those animals have no voice, nor do the kids who play soccer there every single day. This project would disable that structure of their field for an entire year, and it also would take away half of the field where they play every day. You can go, and if you spend time there, you'll see they play there every day. They have no voice, so I'm lending my voice to them. Take out your phones and go to this survey, or you could probably Google it. In less than three days, we have 350 signatures, over $300 raised. That's over 100 a day. You may say the petition isn't valid, but wait, we had a petition that was valid, and you ignored that with your last vote. We played by the rules and realized that they were written to create the facade of listening to the people by design. Leah Morris got countless minutes. The community got three apiece. We got firmly scolded every time we went over the three-minute rule, and she and the planning commission broke every rule on the special use permit and got it approved, including violating that Tier 3 category that any other solution, and this is the master plan that supersedes it, should be considered first. 500 to 1, or 350 to 1. You sided with her over the 350. That's not democracy, but next month is, and a number of you are running. This is a point where, like in Harry Potter, you choose between doing what is right and doing what is easy. No one's perfect. We all make mistakes, but what makes a good person is you respond, and you do right after you know you've made a mistake. In medicine, we always tell the patient when we make a mistake, and then we do right. That's a grain from us from day one. So you have the right to give and take away this project. You have the right to give and take away a beautiful space, and I think you should do the right thing. You know, it's a sacred privilege being where you are, and us putting our trust in you with our vote. And it's not easy to override a planning commission or break a contract, but the will of the people superseded that contract. So did the city plan that it violates. You see, you had that contract first, when you took your oath of office to respect and serve the will of the people, and that supersedes any other. So you can ignore us and hurt our city, hurt our democracy, hurt our innocent children and wildlife in the park and animals, and next month, when 350 or more of us vote, we can remove you from office, or you can listen, and you can vote to take away this project and do what's right.
Thank you. Any other member of the public present like to speak on this item? Any member on Zoom like to speak on this item? Please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature. We'll let Sheri know, and Sheri will call upon you.
Steve Skinell.
Thank you, Mayor. Like some of my colleagues who already spoke, I'm here tonight to ask you to table the action on this agenda item for approving additional design fees on this project until after a meeting is held with the neighbors and the engineers and city staff to discuss the changes that they propose to implement, which are covered under these design fees, and a meeting which, by the way, you asked them to do over five months ago. City staff did confirm several months ago that they had the options ready to share with us, and the engineers confirmed in their fee proposal that's in your agenda item that they've updated the site plan to reflect those changes. But staff indicated they won't share those options with us until an agreement is reached on the McGrew sewer easement. But that easement won't affect the rest of the project in any material way, and it should not hold hostage the review of the updated design drawings. Before any additional design fees are considered, the preliminary drawings that show the proposed changes should be reviewed with the neighbors and with the commissioners, so we can all agree that the proposed changes are acceptable and that the additional design fees are based on all of the required modifications. As a reminder of the key changes and details that I felt could and should be implemented, and which I asked the City Commission to advise staff that you support, I've attached to my submitted written comments a copy of my public meeting comments from the February 2nd Commission meeting. Hopefully, city staff and engineers have agreed to implement these, but we won't know until we see their updated drawings. I would also ask that you direct staff to work with the neighbors and with city parks and rec personnel to complete the master plan of park improvements for recreational uses that are to be implemented in coordination with the Water Tower project, again, before you approve any additional design fees for this project. Doing that would ensure that if any of the recreational improvements require adjustments in the Water Tower project's scope or details, they can also be addressed in a timely manner and would be included in any additional fees that you approve. I'd also point out that there's been a significant amount of time and that that could have been occurring, and I think that it is something that still should be started and completed in a timely way. Also, given that we are now into the summer vacation season, and a number of us will be out of town or unavailable for one or two-week periods, I would also ask that you direct city staff to commit to meeting with the neighbors at the earliest date and time that works for us, and allow us to pull our group to identify several date and time options from which city staff and the engineers can pick the date that works best for them, rather than allow city staff to unilaterally select a date that may not work for some of the neighbors. So thank you for your ongoing support and the neighborhood's concerns and for our mutual goals. Thank you.
Kimberly Hedrick.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Hedrick. I live on Oxford Road, across the street from Water Tower Park. As you're aware, the community is overwhelmingly opposed to this project. Feeling beside, however, I would like to point out several contradictions between the Water Tower project and the comprehensive plan, Plan 2040, or unincorporated Douglas County. The general, excuse me, special use permit, initial requirements that accompanied the application submitted in late 2020 states a requirement for drawings and data necessary to demonstrate that the proposal is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Plan 2040 identifies water towers as being Tier 3, Tier 3 being defined as being the lowest priority for the city. Plan 2040 also states that Tier 3 land is not designated to be annexed within this plan's horizon unless the proposal is found to be the only way to address identified community need and provide community benefits. We know that building a new tower is not the only way, as the existing tower can be repaired. Additionally, the comprehensive plan states that annexation into Lawrence shall be economical and efficient for all parties. It is a well-known fact that as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, building materials, especially steel and electrical components, cost considerably more, steel having already gone up by over 100%. It is not economical to force through a project that will end up costing 40% to 50% more during the current economic crisis. With 20 years of life left in the existing water tower, it is frivolous and is considered to commit over $3 million to a project that the City of Lawrence itself has identified as low priority and goes against the 2040 comprehensive plan, let alone commit an additional $40,000 plus to an engineering firm trying to spearhead a project that's going to cost taxpayers considerably more money. I'm hopeful that this office will reconsider the approval of this special use permit based on the current climate and written and adopted components of Lawrence's 2040 comprehensive plan. Thank you.
If there's anyone else on Zoom who'd like to provide public comment, please either raise your hand virtually or turn on your video. That's all the public comment on this item, Mayor.
Thank you, Sheri. I'll bring you back to the commission for questions or comments.
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to hear from staff about the community engagement part and what they perceived was their job to do regarding that.
Commissioner Larson, am I approved to speak on behalf of the project at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So I really appreciate everybody's public comment. I know that this process is not easy. You know, we went through two planning commission meetings as well as two city commission meetings to get the special use permit approved for the location of the proposed new tower, which we talked about at length. Yes, we are planning for additional public engagement. The property acquisition is something that I have been working with legal upon and making sure that we're identifying all of the options in terms of the easement acquisition, so that there isn't potential for the site plan to change based on those easement acquisitions. There has been significant coordination efforts with other utilities regarding this project, namely Evergy, as well as Douglas County Emergency Management, as well as then internal city coordination with the AMI project and everything that's facilitated for the AMI project, as well as the cellular and cable carriers that currently have satellites hosted on the current tower. We are actively coordinating with all of those groups to make sure that they understand the proposed changes and to make sure that they are also being incorporated into the project and any utility easements that are required for the project because there are existing utility lines there. And then the appraisal process also takes diligence and time. I have worked with city legal extensively in order to make sure that we're communicating these things accurately and trying to meet the needs of the property owners, to make sure that we're presenting the material in the way that they would like to see it, and then, you know, trying to allocate additional costs for the engineering contract, which is what is on agenda tonight. The scope is attach the item. Some of those things, like the extended drive, the widened drive, the options with potential concrete stamping, as well as lighting, as well as landscaping options, that's all what's being looked at as far as the conversations that took place with the planning commission, as well as the city commission, and the public input in regards to those meetings, to develop these options and further pursue them, and not only pursue them with just the consultant, but with internal city staff to make sure that we are supportive of, you know, what the consultant, you know, recommends for lighting and trees, because, again, these things are going to be operated and maintained by the city, we as the owners, and we want to make sure that we're not putting something in place that doesn't meet the need, or if we have had issues with, you know, certain types of lighting in the past, or if there's something that Parks and Rec would prefer to see in that park, so that we can give the public the options that we can also support holistically. I've been working I've been working with Parks and Rec and, you know, specifically Crystal Miles and Facility Maintenance to make sure that what I'm presenting in terms of the public input and the choices that we will be giving are going to be supported by the city and not something that we spend a lot of money on, knowing that it might get broken and we can't replace it for whatever reason, and we want to maintain it. Also making sure that we have local manufacturers to give, to do the concrete stamping that we're requesting, as well as the stains. I guarantee you that I have been doing extensive research on all of these things in order to, again, provide sustainable options. And then there's additional permitting that is needed for the project for FAA that was determined with coordination with Douglas County. And then upon looking at extending a sanitary sewer up on Cambridge Road associated with the sanitary sewer that we're trying to tie into and giving the property owner that we're asking for utility easement from some options there because it isn't just about the water tower at that point. There are sanitary sewer connection issues and code, code issues to the north there that we are also trying to address as part of the project because, again, we're trying to look at things holistically and provide better options for the residents. So, and again, all of these things take additional time and design, and I want to make sure that we're, you know, being transparent in this process. I'm currently working with Porter and Josh on the public engagement. We're looking at dates in the beginning of August for this, as soon as I have, you know, the document, which will be, we will be hosting a meeting in the park. We will also be putting, publishing this online, and we will also be hosting kind of a Dropbox at City Hall so that we're giving every option for people to put in their input on this project. But I want to make sure that the information is accurate and that we can obtain the materials that we're giving options on. That is taking time. And in terms of the, speaking to the materials pricing and everything else, we are diligently paying attention to this and getting opinion of costs on all the projects, quite frankly, in the capital realm, and really trying to make sure that we're not going over budget. If the project does come in bid over budget, then we have to evaluate that as a department and as a city and figure out, you know, how we're going to fund the project or shelf the project until prices come back down or they're more sustainable. Those conversations are happening all the time, again, with all the projects. So I think I've covered a lot of the topics that people have discussed. I try to continue to have conversations with the neighborhood as they call me and email me, which they definitely do, to make sure that I'm keeping them abroad of the project. But I really hope that the commission considers approval of this design so that we can continue on. And again, it's with the design of this project so that we can do the project the due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. I just have a follow-up question. So did you indicate that you've been, you've been engaging with the neighborhood association and the neighbors in that area regarding some of these hurdles that you happened to overcome?
I haven't. As people have reached out independently, I've transpired that. I, again, you know, some of the things that have taken a little bit longer than anticipated in terms of some legal things and some corresponding with Douglas County, I guess I haven't, you know, shared that with the community. I would like to ultimately make sure that the project website remains up to date and I can do, you know, the team can do a better job moving forward of kind of putting where we're at now in terms of the anticipated schedule and what we're currently working on. You know, but ultimately, you know, the questions out of the, out of the public, I have answered every single email and phone call and question that I get in regards to the project. I emailed out the homeowners association in terms of this agenda item, again, because this has been the first real milestone that has been on the agenda since or anything transpired since we had the meeting in January and February. So I just want to make sure that, you know, as things come forward, that we are continuing to do that and, you know, again, engaging the public when we have the options that we can sustain and are ready for that.
Thank you. Leah, I guess when I read this.
Agenda item, I read it as making an amendment so that we could do this additional work with the neighbors and we could update the plans as we previously discussed. It seems like there's been some communication or some thought that this is for work that's already been performed, and I guess I'm trying to make sure I understand what the amendment is for.
So as we looked into the evaluations of some of the lighting and some of the tree options, again, we have to understand, you know, we almost enter into somewhat a preliminary discussion about what that takes, as well as the permitting. But all of these things in terms of the additional driveway things, the additional lighting, the additional landscape, the additional, the additional meetings, which is shown on the scope, have already been done because, again, those were performed back in. So they didn't have those scoped, and that is work that they have already done. But everything else is currently ongoing, but it's, you know, there all been preliminary discussions about what was originally scoped and what was not. And so these are the things that were not in the original scope, and some of them were perpetuated by, you know, what was directed by planning commission, city commission, and again, you know, the comments that came out of the public at that point. And then some of these things were due to coordination with Douglas County and other utilities and identifying the proposed sanitary sewer extension if we go in that direction for the Cambridge Road, depending on the utility easement. So.
And I think I followed that. I guess, I mean, certainly I understood that we ask for additional work to be done, and it makes sense that people get paid for the additional work that we ask to be done, the redesign and so forth. I mean, if, if this takes three, four, five meetings with the neighbors, back to us, possibly going through all that, is that covered in this scope of work, or would we be looking at a different amendment after this?
Leah Morris, Treatment Division Manager, sorry I haven't been stating that this whole time. So we have public engagement as part of the scope, and we have also allocated other areas to influx in that public engagement. Ultimately, the majority of the meeting with the public will be handled by internal city staff. I have coordinated with Sandy Day. She's been the very helpful planner, you know, via this process. I've also coordinated and asked for Mark Hecker, Assistant Director for Parks and Rec, to also attend that in-person meeting at the park because I feel that the public is going to want to give input during that point to the park and ultimately the master plan. And as you'll see on the later documents, that park master plan is not budgeted as part of this project or this year, but I think that the input from the neighborhood during those meetings will be very valuable. And at that point, I don't have Black and Beach scheduled to do public input at the park at that point because it will be city staff, but they still do have some public engagement as on their original scope. So if we have additional extensive planning commission meetings based on other changes, you know, that would be dictated at that point. I'm just trying to scope what is put forth now and the changes that are directed now and try and cover the basis. But the location and the tower type were the main things because that's ultimately the main part of this design. And so the majority of the design and the construction services for that, once we're ready for that, are covered within the scope. So we talked about additional things that might come in, but I don't really foresee going, needing additional scope for this project at this point unless there are major changes.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
So Leah, did we sign that contract with Black and Beach after the SUP was performed or was approved by the commission?
Leah Morris, Treatment Division Manager. I'm sorry, Commissioner Larson, can you repeat your question?
Sure, sorry about that. Did, when did we sign the contract with Black and Beach to proceed with the project? Was it after the SUP was approved?
Leah Morris, Treatment Division Manager. No, Commissioner Larson, the contract was approved via city commission after we hosted RFPs for the project, so that initial, very first scope that is standard for engineering services agreements that we see in the typical time. So we were already into the contract when we put forth the SUP.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
So, again, Leah, you've listed out numerous things, obviously, that you've got to go through in order to get projects approved and built, and I appreciate that. That's kind of the nature of the beast with these things. So you'd also talked about a public engagement schedule that you were looking at, that you're developing. Is there, have you been notifying the neighborhood association about the public engagement schedule to see where they are with them being able to be a part of that?
Leah Morris, Treatment Division Manager. Commissioner Larson, I have reached out to some of the neighborhood residents that have communicated with me in the past, trying to understand what they're seeing as the overall somewhat park schedule. Parks and Rec obviously has anything that's signed up for that park or asked for permission to utilize that park, but if they're seeing, you know, kickball practices or anything like that, I was trying to understand what, when those took place. And ultimately, when we're, you know, through the document in terms of looking at the options, I can provide numerous dates to reach out, and I intended to give at least three weeks' notice in terms of that timeframe so that people could have the opportunity to schedule that. And again, I wanted to make sure that A, we provided a time on-site at the park. I was going to provide an additional time at City Hall and, again, kind of have a Dropbox for the survey that we're providing, and then as well as an online survey. So I'm, you know, we're trying to give everybody multiple avenues to give their input in regards to the project and the public engagement that we're asking for.
Thank you, thank you for that. So have you directly contacted the neighborhood association in regards to the plans for public engagement?
Leah Morris, Treatment Division Manager. No, Commissioner Larson, I have not. And until the document, until the document is ready and approved by our internal team, especially with public engagement, you know, who we have on staff, to make sure that it's formatted and directed how we want with our, you know, again, really trying to focus on public engagement as part of the capital plan in general, I want to make sure I have internal approval from everybody in city management before I reach out to start giving that because I don't want to provide something that is inadequate and that hasn't been reviewed by people that are more professional in the public engagement world than myself. So I anticipate that, we're working through it. Actually, you know, there was some stuff on it today. I don't anticipate it to be very much longer before that document is approved. And again, I really do anticipate looking at August dates for this participation.
Thank you, Leah.
Well, certainly, I think, you know, you know, the public wants to be involved in this, and it sounds like we need them involved in, I mean, we're going to plan to have them involved in this. I do think it's a fair request to make sure we have a couple different times available. I'm going to be on vacation in early August. I don't know if others are as well, so I certainly think we want to be flexible on that, especially since it's city staff, not necessarily Black and Beach being at that, so that we have, you know, maximum, you know, input from the neighbors and the ones that, obviously, have a lot of input to give on this. And I know the folks here, including Steve online, you know, is very, very interested in seeing what comes of this and then being able to have input on that. I mean, I would, of course, no one has seen the, what the first draft is going to look like, but I would assume that, I mean, I guess there's always a chance that the first draft covers everything everyone's interested in, but I would assume that there'd be comments and suggested changes in a follow-up meeting that took those into account, that sort of thing. So that would be what I expect in a public engagement process. And so, I mean, to me, it makes sense that we ask for these changes, we need to pay Black and Beach for the changes that we asked Black and Beach to make, and I think as a, as a legal matter, that's important. And so I'm supportive of this particular agenda item, especially now that I understand some of what is, was in that. But I do think we have a long way to go on, you know, getting this to the finish line and, you know, whatever that ends up looking like. So, you know, again, as, as folks said, we have to have a water tower, we have to have a water tower that works, and we need to keep working towards that, so.
So I'm going to continue on the path that I followed from the beginning, is to vote no for this. It seems to me that the public engagement part we're still working on, obviously, but the fact that it's been five months and staff have not even notified or talked to the neighborhood association regarding their, their status or progress, and I understand that this is a lengthy process, it's complicated, but we need to engage early and engage often with the, with the neighborhood associations where this is being impacted. So I'm going to vote no.
Other comments? Motion?
Vice Mayor? So to speak to the mayor's point, Commissioner Larson, the matter of paying Black and Beach for the work they've already done, how would that play out in your, in your mind here?
Well, I'm going to vote no, so that's as far as it plays out.
Okay.
At this point in time, you know, as I did with, in the beginning of the project.
How, when something is mangled with public engagement, how do we ever get back to the beginning, to the satisfaction that creates trust with the homeowners association?
Well, I think it goes to what I said, and that is you got to engage early, engage often with the neighborhood associations, and that seems to be an issue on this particular project, and I know it has been on in others. And I know we're working on public engagement, we're, we're doing some different things, and we're going, we're going to work till we get this right on the community engagement. So I guess I'm, my message is just sending that, the process that was followed in order for this project to happen, I just am not satisfied with it at all, and I would hope that it was sending messages that we've got to do better if I'm going to vote on these things.
This is Ms. Sharon Nanda.
Go ahead.
I would move that we authorize the city manager to execute supplemental agreement number two with Black and Beach Corporation in the amount of $41,171 for the Stratford Water Tower replacement project.
This is Commissioner Bowley. As I second this, I would like to concur with Commissioner Larson that, you know, we need to do a better job on community engagement, but I feel the obligation to support this because of the contractual obligations. So I will second.
So motion by Commissioner Nanda, second by Commissioner Bowley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one. Okay, now on to B 76, I believe. Vice Mayor Shipley, you pulled that item?
Yeah, was it B 76 or B 7C?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I can't read my own handwriting. That's a B 7C though, yes.
This is the bicycle, I'm getting to it again here, apologize, everyone. To be honest, Mayor, I would, if, if I just had my druthers, it would be to just bump this to next week and us all just move on to the main event. But I understand anyone might be suspicious of my motivations there. I promise it's not just to fuss about sidewalks. My concern was, my concern was, and I, and I think Commissioner Bowley will find common cause with me here, is the item, which is the Massachusetts sidewalk from, I believe, 14th to 23rd? Sorry, 21st to 23rd. And I bring that up because on our CIP projects for 2023, which we may or may not discuss later, there is another project, which is a study of this whole area from 14th to 23rd. And my concern was these two projects being kind of disconnected from each other, we may end up spending money that we may in the future regret. I'm sure Commissioner Bowley recalls that he and I hope great things for some changes in that area of Massachusetts Street for bicycles and pedestrians. So I just didn't want us to come a year later and do a study and say, oh, no, we should have done a multi-use path, or we should have done a protected bike lane and narrowed. I just think there's a lot of options in that space, and I, I just didn't want this to get disappeared because it just wasn't connected to another project. And that, that other project in the CIP, for any of its information, is MS 23-0065, which in the packet for us that printed them out is page 39. It does specifically talk about improving bike pedestrian facilities, connections to the other larger streets, 19th and 23rd. So that, that was the reason. But again, I actually didn't want to waste time on this. I thought maybe we could bump it to next week and spend a little more time on it and move on to the main event. Thanks, Mayor.
Well, I'm interested, at least in hearing a response to that, I guess. So I know what I'm thinking about, even if we defer it. I don't know if Jake is available?
What project that was?
Yes, Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I understand your concerns, Commissioner Shipley, and I think some, some further thought may be prudent there. However, I, I would maybe ask that, if, if that's one of your concerns, that maybe we approve the plan with that exception, or maybe swap our West 9th project with our Massachusetts Street project. That way, the, the money could be committed next year, and then we can reassess this next year if we bring the, the five-year-plan-for-approval every year. If, if that's something that may be amenable, I think that maybe answers your question or at least gives you the time to, to get your answers.
Mayor, I do have another question, but it's going to take me a minute to scroll to it. I think you might have had a question, too.
Well, you know, now that you've mentioned that, Jake, I, I did have a question about the 9th Street project, and I thought, well, because it wasn't until 2023, I'd have time to address that. But now, if you're talking about swapping it, the 9th Street project, you know, it's proposing the sidewalk in front of the rock wall on, on 9th Street. And I know about 10 years ago, that was going to be a very expensive project, such that our neighborhood group there asked, instead of paying for that sidewalk, could we get the, get a crossing, the pedestrian crossing? And, and we did get the pedestrian crossing, which I was, I and my neighbors were appreciative of. But now that project's back and it only has $50,000 assigned to that. Have we, have we worked something out with that homeowner, or have we had a different discussion on how we can get that sidewalk past that rock wall?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I'm not terribly familiar with the excess expenses with that small segment of sidewalk, Mayor. I would have to look into that further to, to see what that expense would be. However, I, you know, if, if we need to, we could just postpone the P-12 Massachusetts Street and, and not swap anything, but I would leave that to your guys' discretion.
I would like to thank Commissioner Shipley, Vice Mayor Shipley, for her contribution to this.
I agree. I think we should take a real look at the whole thing instead of just doing the sidewalk. So I'd be happy to postpone that project. And, you know, if we don't have anything to swap it out, then let's just go ahead without that.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Bowley. But in addition, if we, if we were going to do that, I do want to bring something up to Jake, just so he looks at it for whenever we reevaluate it. The last, so you'd page 25 or 27, the non-motorized project prioritization policy gives the list and the scores. And the last column, you know, has these lovely colors. And I just, I was a little curious, some of the ones that are selected don't have costs in the last column. But of course, many of the other ones that are not funded do. So I, if you don't have an answer, that's fine. Hopefully, we'll talk about this next week, but I didn't want to catch you on a where's next time.
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. At quick glance, I think a lot of those projects are crossing projects, and it's not really easy to compare those to a pedestrian project where we're looking at cost per linear foot. Obviously, a, a crossing project is just not going to be an apples-to-apples comparison there.
Thank you.
So Jake, are you asking that we approve it tonight for a reason, so we can get a, is there something, or, or deferring it to next week, okay to consider it then?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I don't see there being a real rush if you want more time to consider.
Commissioner, is that what you're asking?
I, I would appreciate that if, if anyone besides Commissioner Bowley would join me and just bump it one week for a little more time.
Amenable to that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Move to defer.
Second.
Mayor, sorry, since we, there was a lot of discussion about this, I do think you should open it up for public comment. I know you're deferring it, but we really
Thank you.
Had a pretty detailed conversation about the item.
That's a good point. Before we take the motion, we'll take public comment on this item. If any member of the public who's here would like to speak on the item, seeing none, if any person online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature.
Mayor, there's no public comment on this item.
Seeing no public comment, but thank you, Sheri, for pointing that out. There's a motion by Commissioner Bowley, a second by Vice Mayor Shipley, to defer item B 7C to next week. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five to zero. We are now on to public comment. The public is allowed to speak on items or issues that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. If any person has an item they'd like to make in general public comment, please let me know. Okay, seeing no one in person, if anyone online would may like to make general public comment, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, and Sheri will call upon you. Of course, the budget's a pretty broad topic, so I'm not sure if, there'll be a few things people could talk about that's not in the budget, but.
Chad Osdell?
Hello. It's me again, Chad Osdell, MSO, asking the same stupid questions as to why it is that we're evaluated differently than other departments in MSO. I would like to thank that we were all evaluated using the appraisal process written in the handbook. But what department is scored and evaluated as the handbook says? What departments other than MSO is scored using the TWO method? What other departments are scored using the TWO method, if any? All I'm asking for is, if the MSO is scored differently than all other departments, why is there nothing written anywhere telling MSO how they're scored and evaluated? They're just told it's using the TWO method. I believe we deserve at least to be told how and why we're evaluated differently, and what the evaluation process is we're scored and evaluated by. Instead of being given a performance appraisal evaluation handbook and told, this is what the city uses, and a year later, when you're evaluated, you're told, oh, well, we use the TWO method in our department. We score things differently here. With no explanation as to why or what the hell it is, just that it is, and that's all that it is. And you can shut your mouth and go back to work. I've been asking this question for quite some time, and the city commissioners seem perfectly fine with the employees having no labor rights representation because they're the ones that deny it from us by opting out of PIRA, which costs the city absolutely nothing out of pocket. It just means that there's somebody watching over their shoulder to make sure they do things properly, and that is the last thing that the city wants. I'm waiting next for, yeah, and find out whether it's 2.5% general wage adjustment is going to be given to the unrepresented employees, or if it's just going to be given to the rest of the city. Stupid question again, but I'll wait for the answer. Thank you very much.
That's all the public comment, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to the work session. Work sessions provide an opportunity for the commission to discuss items in greater detail. The commission shall take no binding action on those items listed on the work session, but may refer items to staff for follow-up. When public comment is sought on work session items, each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. We now have the one work session item, which is to receive the city managers' recommended budget.
Thank you very much, Mayor. City Manager Craig Owens, and it is my great privilege to present to you the 2020 recommended budget. And this, this is a process that happens annually, and it's required by local and state law, that we start the process off with presentation of my, my proposal. I want to thank a number of people in getting to this stage, because you reviewed the document and you know that there's a lot that goes into getting to this point. First of all, the community. This will be the first year that we really built a, built this budget around a strategic plan, and the strategic plan was started with a lot of public engagement. We had over 3,000 contacts building towards that, and then countless hours developing that strategic plan with your help and guidance and ultimate ratification. We now build and start operationalizing the strategic plan using the, using the budget process, where we allocate the resources of the city and the community to try and match its needs and requirements. I want to thank you all for the work to build a very important guiding strategic document that makes this challenging work more guided and more directed, which is what you want in a high-performing organization. So I thank you for that clarity. I also then, of course, want to thank our team, particularly Danielle Bushcutter and Jeremy Wilmeth, who you'll be hearing from later, who led our budget team, which included our executive team and a number of staff throughout the organization in trying to build this program, which, for the first time, aligns with a strategic priority list as we build the budget. There were literally millions of possibilities of what we could have presented here today, and this is but one. We put it together, being mindful of balance, being responsive to what we understand from what the community has told us, and to be proactive, to be guiding towards another future, to work these, use these resources to build us towards a plan that's intentional and that's forward-looking. The next several weeks in this budget process, we understand we will work to gain a better understanding, to deliver a better understanding of this very complex plan, this financial plan, and also this resource allocation. We want to share as much as we can about the thought that went into it. We look forward to those questions from you, and then, of course, from the public that we have already heard from and that we look forward to engaging with through multiple formal and informal processes in the next several weeks. And then to making the adjustments, because this is, this is my proposal as a starting point, and then we look forward to making it the right budget for our community through this process. So with that, I'm going to start with the presentation formally, and then when we start to get into a little more detail, I'll hand it off. So this is where I get to play Captain Obvious a little bit. The, facing the ongoing impacts of COVID-19 has been incredibly challenging to our organization, to our community, to the people and businesses and members of our community, obviously, to the state, the, the country and the world. Nobody escaped being impacted. We continue to be impacted in our organization and the way we provide services to the community. The resources that we use to do that are largely sales tax and property tax. Sales tax has been incredibly volatile, which, again, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we had a very positive June sales tax report, which also means that our businesses are doing much better than they have been, but it also has an impact on us. So we have had a lot of volatility and tried to manage through that with the way that we're projecting and building this budget. The guest tax and liquor tax have been significantly impacted as well through this, which also reflects on the businesses that are dependent on and producing that, but also affects those that are provided services from that resource. And then I would also say that we are seeing a lot of increases in our building permits, and these are largely residential but exclusively residential, which is a great sign, but also creates a demand on the way we provide services as that building happens. We've continued in this budget, we are continuing to provide essential services to continue those operation in virtually every key area. And this, again, as I mentioned, is the first year that we'll be operat, operationalizing the strategic plan. I want to highlight three very significant things that are included in this budget, and there are many, many other, many other programs that we're proud of and that we've continued or that we've innovated to try and respond to the community's needs. But the first one I want to talk about is the resources for housing security. So we will create a new division within Planning and Development Services of the Housing Initiatives Division, and this will, this will be a reallocation of a number of resources. It'd be consolidation strategically around housing and homelessness and the response to that. We're, we're formally recognizing we're in the game, we're organizing around this being a long haul, and that we need to be organized, responsive, and coordinated with other parts of our government and the not-for-profit community, particularly the county, the state of Kansas, and the federal government. Another highlight here is, as we talked about earlier in this meeting, is our commitment to infrastructure. Last year, I was proud to provide a plan for the first time, a five-year capital improvement plan, that was sustainable and that would be addressing our very deep backlog of deferred maintenance and capital investment across all of our systems that our communities depended upon. Addressing this five-year backlog is, is expensive, it is a commitment, and it's going to take sustained effort. So year two is no more, no less meaningful than year one. We have to keep at it. We have to keep at it next year and the year after and the year after that. This plan will build us into a modern and functional infrastructure, which will be seeking a lowest cost of ownership so as to be less of an overall burden to our future residents and stakeholders and to provide the necessary services that our infrastructure creates. Next piece that I'd like to highlight is bringing our compensation to market rates. This we will call the human infrastructure of our community's resource allocation for key services that we provide. In 2018, we adopted a plan using a national consultant that gave us guidance on how to structure our compensation to balance extreme market pressures. We are close to a major market within a driving distance. We share a workforce with a major metropolitan area and others. And it is critical for us to pay attention to how we compete with the people for the talent war that is on. For what we ask, what our community asks our employees to do requires us to pay very close attention to that. That's what this study did in 2018 was to help us with that. The other side of that balance is also that it manages the most expensive part of our allocation of taxpayer resources, and that is salaries and wages and benefits for our professionals. We don't want, it's important that we keep that in balance. So we want to stay competitive and we also don't want to overallocate so that we can stretch our resources to do the most good for our community. So this plan implements that over this year and next year. You will see an allocation of a two and a half percent general wage adjustment. And then there will be other factors such as addressing compression and some other key factors that were recommended in the 2018 study and that we had not yet addressed. Between this year and next year, we will have completely implemented all of the structural changes so that we have that modern pay system that will keep up with market and that will stretch our resources to do the most good in our community. As your early, your early direction to us in the budget process and the pre-budget planning asked, we did hold flat the mill levy rate. And we did that to continue these, these projects, the emphasis on the three items that I mentioned, as well as keeping all major services, continuing the services there. This does assume a 4.3% increase on sales tax, which we believe is a very achievable level. Not overly optimistic, but does get us back into closer to what we expected on the pre-pandemic. We also project to maintain a 21% fund balance so that the unforeseen, we have resources to deal with the unforeseen and not lose critical service. This is all really only possible this year and next year because of recovery and aid from the American Rescue Plan, federal aid related to COVID-19. We believe that this is exactly what it was intended for. We are seeing service, service level demands. People in our community need and depend on the services that we provide now more than ever. As I mentioned, the infrastructure is a critical thing that our economy and our community depends on. We have to keep all of these moving forward now more than ever. And with the assistance of the COVID-19 aid and federal government, we're able to do these things and consolidate and prioritize addressing the homelessness issues that were only terribly exacerbated by the pandemic and the economic situation that occurred there. So for the next two years, however, after we have this, this aid that allows us this bridge to get to our future, by 2024, we're still, we're going to have to have put in place a sustainable plan to, to make this balance and to get our lines to meet back together and produce a sustainable financial condition. There are three basic ways that we're going to have to work as a community to plan to address this structural concern. The first is, in some combination of these, service reductions, increased taxes and rates and growth of the tax base. Everybody's a fan of growth of the tax base. We are, we are as well. We put resources in here to continue to work with our community partners and build our economy, grow our local economy, grow our tax base. That is the least painful way to move forward in this and it's very important. And I think we have very good reasoning to expect that we will see good growth coming out of the, out of the recession. Increased in taxes or rates are not popular, but it's some part of our conversation. And service reductions are very difficult for any organization to do. The things that we do for the community and stakeholders have deep connection with the people that benefit from them. And so when we start to talk about any kind of reduction, any kind of a modification to what people are dependent on, it is a serious conversation that we need to take on seriously. So as you'll see and as we move into this process, and I hope that we talk about over the next few weeks publicly, we do have some plans to put an organized process. We have time to have a community conversation so that we can get the balance right and get us, get ourselves situated by 2024 to be in a very sustainable and very positive financial position to continue on. So this is the first chart that kind of shows this. We just wanted to demonstrate that. We won't go into too much detail now, but that is our challenge. So the increase between, you see in 2020 to 2021, I want to help the audience understand that that, that increase in both revenue and expenditure is mostly attributable to the way we accounted for things differently internally. So that really didn't have a change other than we are, we have internal service charges that, that show up on both sides of the balance sheet. So that's not an actual dollar change. It's more of the way that we're accounting for those dollars. So I wanted to explain that part. But the real highlight of this chart is intending to show the difference in the blue and the red lines. That is not sustainable. That's where the revenue goes, goes up faster than, than the, or the costs go up faster than the revenue. That's our, that's our conversation over the next year or so that we look forward to having. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Danielle Bushcutter, who will take us through most of the rest of these presentations. But again, I want to thank you for the time here and look forward to the next few weeks of conversation.
Thank you very much, Craig. I appreciate that. I'm going to go through the next couple of slides here with you all that give kind of a high level overview of those main revenue sources that we typically talk about. So as you can see here, these are our property taxes and our assessed valuation over the course of the last 10 years. So you can see at the beginning of these, beginning years of this chart, we were relatively flat. But starting in 2014 and 2015, we really started to see some positive growth related to our assessed valuation that we were experiencing for a number of years. So that trend has continued in 2021, which is the rate we used for the 2022 budget. So we saw an increase of about 2.47% over the previous year. So we're continuing that positive growth trend, which is a really good sign. One of the other things we typically talk about when we talk about property taxes, just to provide a little bit of context, is that every time you pay your property tax bills, it's going to support a number of different governmental entities. So the state of Kansas has 1%, receives 1% of that dollar. The school district is 39% of that dollar, the county at 34% and the city of Lawrence at 25%. Obviously, these percentages change a little bit. All of us are going through this budget process at the same time. So this may change over the course of the next couple of months and weeks. But generally speaking, this is the breakdown that we see in our community every time you as an individual pay $1 of property tax. So we always like to kind of provide that context. Moving over to sales tax. This again, just is presented to you this evening to provide a little bit of that context. This too has seen some really positive growth over the last 10 years. And what we're really seeing is obviously a reduction in impacts that we experienced related to COVID. But we're, we're seeing that rebound in 2021 and 2022. So we're really anticipating getting back to kind of that growth trend line that we were on before the pandemic. So that's really what you're seeing reflected here is kind of that return back to that growth pattern we were seeing, which was in a really positive direction related to sales tax. There are a number of personnel additions that are included in the city manager's recommended budget. I am going to spend a little bit of time this evening walking through each of these in a little bit of detail just to provide a little bit more context than just a list of additional FTEs so that you all are kind of aware of some of the kind of key items related to each of these personnel additions that are being proposed. So the first is a sustainability analyst. And I should say at the front end of this, you're, you're going to see a reoccurring theme when it comes to analysts both here in this slide and we'll talk about it a little bit more on the unfunded slide as well. But this was a really common request this year as we start to really incorporate the budget into our strategic plan using data so that we can make good data-driven decisions. So you're going to see that reoccurring theme over and over again in my remarks here this evening. So starting with the sustainability analyst, this position will obviously help us in our environmental sustainability commitment area and really serve as a city-specific champion for environmental sustainability and really helping us move the needle on a number of the initiatives that we have in place, whether that's through policy change, collaboration with departments internally, with the, with the public to really help us make some really important progress in this particular area. The next is an equity and inclusion coordinator. So this obviously is supporting the equity and inclusion commitment area that we have within our strategic plan and will really help put into place some equity and inclusion action plans. And again, work as a citywide liaison for departments and also with the community to really move us towards some good policies and practices related to equity and inclusion and to provide some additional support to that function. Moving forward to the budget analyst position. Again, this is supporting sound fiscal stewardship in that commitment area. And this position will really help with the development and implementation of the annual budget process, including not only the operating budget, but the capital budget with the capital improvement plan, vehicle and equipment replacement plan along with the maintenance plan. And again, helping us really further tie the budget and the strategic plan together through priority-based budgeting. Next is the economic development analyst. This is again, to kind of, to help support our prosperity and economic security outcome area and really help support that operation. So again, similarly to sustainability and equity and inclusion, this is an area where we really have one key staff person that is really moving us forward in those areas. And this would be some additional support to help with some of those administrative needs that that function has and to really help us move the needle on the strategies outlined in our strategic plan, which is also supported by our economic development plan. Moving down the list to the grant administrator. This would be grant funded using those American Rescue Plan Act dollars and will really help manage that grant throughout that process. It will really be a core component to that grant management in terms of reporting and all of those sorts of things. But we also hope that this position can help provide some assistance, some consistency across our organization and some centralization related to grant administration because that's currently very decentralized within the organization. So it will also help kind of support some of those policies and getting those up and running and in place. Next, we have the administrative technician. Again, this is anticipated to be fully grant funded. And this would help support with customer service at the Bob Billings and Crestline multimodal transfer facility. And so this would use federal transportation grant dollars to really support and assist with public engagement and questions and kind of that customer service side related to that new facility. Next, we have a mobility planner. Again, this is anticipated to be state-funded. The goal of this position is really to help identify and close gaps in our transportation services and really serve as a coordinator between the various transit providers that we have in our community to help determine unmet community transportation needs and coordinate some improvements related to that. This is a state grant program. And as the program is currently outlined, the state would fund the first two years of that position at 100%. And then in year three, it would be a 90-10 split with a 10% local match. That would be, that would be required in this. I should mention it would also help us in our connected cities outcome area. And then finally, as Craig alluded to in his comments a little bit earlier, there's one FTE identified here in the homeless initiatives coordinator. Again, the goal here is to have a state grant to help support that position and really, really will assist with the coordination and implementation of various housing initiatives related to homeless outreach, emergency sheltering and rapid rehousing among some, some other important duties. And this really helps support us in the area of strong welcoming neighborhoods and safe and secure. A couple more personnel changes that are being recommended as part of this city manager's recommended budget for 2022. These are all reclassified vacant patrol officer positions. We have really been struggling to keep up with our current levels of attrition within that operation. So we've had a number of vacant positions for quite a while. And so this proposal here reallocates those resources to hopefully help accomplish some of the goals that we have identified and do it in a way without adding additional dollars to the budget and using some of those underutilized resources that we've had for a number of years. So the first position identified here to be reclassified is accreditation analyst. And I should note that these positions here are in alignment to the City Gate report that you all received an update on a few meetings back. And really help us utilize civilian staff where, where we're able to, to meet some of the goals and objectives we have as an organization. So the first one is that accreditation analyst. The next one is a victim witness coordinator to really help kind of serve in that capacity and provide some of those support services. Next is four FTEs shifting to a non-sworn unit to help with specific responses to specific types of calls. And then finally, and we'll get into more details related to this, are moving two FTEs to the Housing Initiatives Division. So moving in to that division and getting into a little bit more detail related to this. So a couple kind of key, I should have used the word objectives instead of outcomes. But a couple of key objectives related to this are really in the arena of homeless outreach, emergency sheltering, rapid rehousing, affordable housing and homeowner and neighborhood assistance. This is, as it's being proposed, budget neutral. So we did allocate, reallocate some existing positions and refocus what has previously been used for outside agency funding to really help support this specific initiative. So I'm going to go through this in just a little bit more detail. So we wanted to kind of highlight the different funds that will really help support this Housing Initiatives Division. housing initiatives division, and we'll get into an org chart in just a little, a little bit to kind of see how that would be structured within Planning and Development Services. But on the general fund side, identified a number of positions that we've moved to this division, as well as some additional kind of overhead costs for supplies and that sort of thing, to really help centralize that coordination of projects and programs relating, related to housing initiatives within the city. The other kind of general fund expenditures that we have identified here are $1,139,000 to really help support those kind of key objectives we articulated and identified. A couple key notes on this funding that I want to make sure to highlight for you all this evening is that $20,000 of this funding has been identified to support neighborhoods. So several months back, we talked about some neighborhood funding and support, and so that is being captured in that $1.13 million figure. And the rest of that is reallocating, like I mentioned previously, those dollars that had been used, those general fund and special alcohol dollars that had been used for our grant outside agency process, would shift those to be more of an RFP-type process so that we can really be specific and intentional with the types of services that we're really hoping to achieve and those results we're really hoping to achieve with those dollars. So a reallocation of that funding. Then we also wanted to recognize some of those other key areas that are helping us in and providing housing initiatives that we currently have in place, including our home fund, CBBG funding that we receive, as well as our housing trust fund dollars. And again, that additional position that we anticipate receiving state funding for is also identified here, and so we wanted to identify that as that kind of project coordinator position. So I wanted to include kind of a proposed Planning and Development Services organizational chart. I know it's a little bit small. All of the proposed, the new proposed housing initiatives division are highlighted in green here. And so one of the things that is important to note about this proposal is that one of those homelessness project specialists is currently a position that is within Parks and Rec, and the recommendation would be to kind of embed them within Planning and Development Services. So that is being, that is being captured here. So that homelessness coordinator is that grant-funded position, and then the reallocation of those PD positions, that other homelessness project specialist. So moving forward to the capital budgeting changes, we obviously were before you a month ago to talk about the capital improvement plan, the vehicle and equipment replacement plan, as well as our maintenance plan. And there's been a few changes to that with the materials that have been prepared for this evening that we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of. So as we continue to go through the budget process and continue to update our numbers and recommendations and those sorts of things, these are some of those additional changes that we wanted to make sure you all were aware of. So I will go through this a little bit quicker, but the New Hampshire parking garage stairway enclosure, as well as the New Hampshire garage painting maintenance programs were both removed from the capital budget. The parking fund isn't quite to a place where it can support these expenditures. We hope, we'll have much more data with the new parking system in place in about a year from now, and we're, the hope is that we can get this programmed into 2023. Those projects are still needed, but at this point, that fund just can't quite support those additional expenditures. So it's something that we're going to continue to monitor and to review for future budgets so that hopefully we can get that programmed, and particularly, once we have a lot better data related to the new parking structure and implementation that we have in the downtown, we're really excited about that, but it hasn't been up and running for too many months. So we are optimistic about that, but for the time being have removed it because the revenues just don't quite support it. These other projects from the downtown pole lighting replacement, including the street maintenance, curb and gutter rehab, downtown parking lot maintenance, our two sidewalk improvement, both on the public and the city side, along with the alley rehab and the traffic signal rehabilitation projects, are a slight reduction or a reduction in some capacity to those different maintenance programs. It's not a full removal of any of those maintenance programs, but reducing that funding slightly to help produce a more sustainable and balanced budget. So the downtown pole lighting is a 50% reduction. The others are different proportions, but it is not a complete removal of those projects, but rather just reducing the amount that we have identified in 2022. Again, as, as we continue to monitor revenues and those sorts of things, to the extent we can reprogram this in 2023, and those out years, we'll continue to look for those opportunities. And then the final project here that was removed was the Holcombe Sports Complex infield replacements. So moving forward to the unfunded requests before we get into more of the kind of budget overview slides, again, this is going to be a place where I spend a little bit of time just to provide a little bit of context related to these different numbers before you. So as you can see, on, as a, on a collective whole scale, there were a number 87 of unfunded staffing requests, as well as, which, which correlates to about $13.8 million. That's not just the staff cost, but some of those ancillary requests that go with that as well, to provide you all kind of a high-level overview of what that looks like. In the unmistakable identity, the, some of those unfunded requests were related to special events, asset management, tree canopy and natural environment, some infrastructure and maintenance support, some Oak Hill Cemetery support, as well as some management analysts. So that was nine unfunded staff requests for a total of about $1.3 million. On the strong welcoming neighborhood side, there were seven and a half positions, which equated to about $3.7 million. This was kind of the initial proposal for the new division within Parks and, or within Planning and Development Service, that housing initiatives division. We weren't able to program that as new dollars, and so that's why you're seeing that reallocation of existing dollars to get that up and running. Safe and secure, they were 14 unfunded staff requests for about $1.1 million. This, this included some functions such as some court security improvements, some public education related to risk reduction for fire medical, as well as plans, examiners, permit inspector, and a civilian paramedic, along with some requested firefighter positions and some administrative support. And on the PD side, the police department side, some unfunded civilian investigators, and they had a number of requests that we were able to find through reprioritization. The initial request was to have those be additional positions, but we weren't able to quite get that program. On the prosperity and economic security side, there were four unfunded staff requests for a total of one point, almost $2 million. So on the staffing side, there was an airport manager and a farmland remediation team. A majority of that unfunded request amount is really related to some additional contractual services to help us with some of those strategies under the prosperity and economic security outcome area with some of those kind of key partner agencies for some of that work. So a higher unfunded dollar amount related to the number of staffing requests. Moving over to the connected city outcome area, there were 21 total staff requests for about $2.2 million. This included a number of additional kind of staffing crews related to in-house pavement maintenance, treatment crew, a water distribution crew, along with some specific positions related to a transportation manager, right-of-way support, some more analysts related to asset management in our AMI program. And then finally, we have the commitments. So as we noted earlier in the presentation, we have recommended, as part of the city manager's recommended budget, a number of additional positions for the commitments, but there were still 31 and a half unfunded staff requests, which equated to about $3.5 million. So this ranged from a more robust equity and inclusion office, sustainability office and budget office, as well as increased human resources management support for communication, professional development, risk management, strategic planning, and some of those key areas, as well as on the IT side or the efficient and effective team side, some staff to build up an operational excellence team for process improvement, a PMO manager, a fiber manager, and then on our facility side, a carpenter. So I wanted to provide a little bit more context to this slide related to kind of what went behind these numbers. With that, we are transitioning into kind of the portion of this presentation that really helps take our first step towards budgeting by outcome area. So as with most budget people, I want to caveat this with our chart of accounts isn't quite structured like this, and so there's a lot of manual work that has to be done in order to produce this. So there are a couple areas that I have noticed some inconsistency, so I'll try to note those for you throughout the presentation, but this is really our first attempt to take our strategic plan and really tie it to our budget and what we're hoping to achieve. So this will continue to be refined and improved as we go forward, but we're really excited to kind of take this first step with you all this year as we kind of look to use this as our guiding framework moving forward. The other caveat I will note is that as we present the budget to you like this, there are a couple things from kind of an accounting perspective that we have pulled out so that we're not double counting things. One of those are our internal service or our commitments. We have only showed the costs for those once. The other thing that we have removed is our debt service payments, or our debt service fund, I should say, as well as the transfers. So we use a lot of transfers to move dollars from one fund to another for a specific project. So this removes those transfers, so we're just seeing the funding for that specific project under the appropriate outcome area. So if people are really interested in this, and I hope there are a few of them out there, we do have an open transparency portal that really allows you to take a look at the budget at that line item level, look at it by fund. This is really meant to provide that high-level overview to really show that our budget through kind of the strategic plan lens. The other thing I want to note before we get into each of these outcome areas is that connected cities, or connected city is 55%. The key driver of this is that that is where we see a majority of our capital improvement plan, our vehicle and equipment replacement plan, as well as our maintenance plan. So there are a lot of capital expenditures that are showing up in connected city, which is really one of the key drivers for why that percentage is so much higher than those other outcome areas. So shifting over to the unmistakable identity outcome, you can see here 35% are personnel, personnel costs, and then 40% are contractual services. So those are the two really big drivers. This is really capturing, if I'm translating it back to kind of previous years, capturing our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as our library and our guest tax fund. So really kind of some of the highlights here, maintaining those current levels of service. And one of the, the strategies and progress indicators we have is related to scholarships. So we have dollars programmed for that that are being captured here as well. Moving over to strong welcoming neighborhoods, again, this is another outcome area that is heavily driven by personnel and contractual services. This is capturing our Planning and Development Services Department, as well as public health. And like the slide, a couple of slides previously, this is where we're capturing the housing trust fund, CBBG home, and as well as solid waste. There is, one of those things that I said probably needs to be updated is it's also showing our transportation planning fund, which is in Planning and Development Services. I think the more appropriate home for this is actually in connected city, so I wanted to acknowledge that and call that out, and we'll get that cleaned up. But this is really Planning and Development Services and solid waste. So we've talked tonight about that housing initiatives division, highlighting again that $20,000 for neighborhood funding, and we're really excited about the implementation of our new community development software, which will be a component of the new ERP system that we have in the works, and you'll be hearing more about in the relatively near future, but we're really excited about that. Moving over to safe and secure, this is very heavily 68% driven by personnel. Some of those kind of key initiatives, obviously, we talked about reallocating some positions to really meet the needs of the organization and really a good and productive push towards that accreditation. So with the addition of that analyst position in PD and obviously, fire medical department is accredited as well, so this is, those are some of the key initiatives. So this is capturing municipal court, police, and fire medical. Moving over to prosperity and economic security, this one looks a little bit different than some of the other outcome areas, very heavily focused in contractual services. That's about 90% of this outcome area currently. So this is capturing our economic development division within the general fund, as well as any of those TIF, TDD, and NRA funds, along with our farmland fund. So some of the key highlights here are some of that additional staffing, and this is where we have the funding for some of those partner agencies like Peaslee, The Chamber, and BTBC to help us move towards the strategies outlined in the strategic plan related to prosperity and economic security and those various progress indicators. And then finally, moving over to connected city, so again, about 50% of this is capital outlay, which is really being reflected in the capital improvement plan, the vehicle and equipment replacement plan, and the maintenance plan. So this is capturing, within the general fund, our municipal services and operation, the airport, our public transportation fund, as well as some of those enterprise funds. So the water and wastewater fund, public parking, stormwater, and then those various capital funds that we have for the water and wastewater functions. So really a really significant investment in infrastructure, really excited about the Lawrence Transit Route redesign and their new green buses, as well as making headway in progress towards our asset management and that lowest cost of ownership. So shifting over to the last couple slides here, we've mentioned this, I think, at every single presentation that we have had before you all related to the budget, but Senate Bill 13 is how we've been referring to it, but it's the truth and taxation bill. And I think the really critical part of this, we'll get to in the budget calendar slide, but it is ensuring that we hold a revenue-neutral rate between August 20th and September 20th, and it changes when we have to have the budget certified to be October 1st. Previously, it was August 25th. So the really critical kind of budget calendar next step is the July 20th meeting. So that's when we have to notify the county of our intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, and this is, the important component of this is that it includes a maximum mill levy rate. So you all will be asked to take action on the 20th to establish that maximum mill levy rate. So it, the mill levy will not be able to be increased after that point. It will, it will It will, it will provide that firm cap on what that mill levy rate can be. So that's really kind of that critical next action item related to the budget. And then after that, on August 31st, that's when we really will have the, we'll get into and hopefully really hear from the public related to the budget proposal, and that's when we'll have the revenue-neutral rate hearing, as well as the budget hearing. And then the final step, once we hear all of that feedback and receive any additional direction from you all, is to bring back a budget resolution for you all to ultimately adopt as, as part of this process. So with that, a couple key policy questions for you all to consider tonight. The first is related to the mill levy. So the city manager's recommended budget recommends a flat mill levy, so verification that you all want to keep that flat so that we can notify the clerk at the next, at your next meeting and comply with that truth and taxation bill. And then the second question is a little bit more broad, but are there changes to the budget you would like to see reflected before the public hearing? And this is really meant to capture everything, the operating budget, the capital improvement plan, the vehicle and equipment replacement plan, as well as the maintenance plan. So those are the key policy questions. We did include a slide here for some additional information, just so folks have access to that as part of the agenda packet materials, so that that's available for folks as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have a number of staff virtually present with us this evening that would also be happy to answer any questions. But with that, that concludes our formal presentation, and I'll turn it back over to you all.
Do we want to take maybe a 10-minute break before we get into questions and then public comment? I think that might make sense. So let's take a 10-minute break. We'll turn, return at 7:42, it looks like, and then we'll take questions, and then we'll open into public comment.
We have, we have a guy taking care of our yard now, so we don't have this anymore.
Just having like the pile sometimes.
Oh, good.
Kurt, you got it?
All set.
Okay, welcome back from our break. We are now going to move into commissioner questions, followed by public comment, and then bring you back for discussion. So which commissioner would like to start with questions?
I'll start off.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor. So my first question is on the slides under the personnel changes summary. Let me get back to that one. Thank you. So my question is, it looks like the four, the top three positions are from, are being funded through the administrative services fund. Where does that money come from?
This is Danielle. So that money is coming from all of the other operational funds. So this is those internal service charges that you see housed within the general fund, our enterprise funds, and those main special revenue funds, such as the public transportation fund, the guest tax fund, and those sorts of things. So it's hitting all of those major operating budgets within the city.
So it's the internal services fee, is that correct? Okay. That's what, that's what I thought. Then the last four positions are some aspect of grant funding from the state or the feds. I know one of them, you said that it's being funded 100% for the first two years, then 90% the third year. So what about the, what about the fourth year in going forward, as well as these other ones? If the, if the grant funding falls off, what happens then?
So I'll, this is Craig Owens. I'll take that question. We would, obviously, we're going to be monitoring that. They may extend the grants, but if they don't, then those would be things where we'd want to either come up with the revenue to extend those programs, or it may be that the, the purpose has been served. Whatever we do when we fund those positions, we'd be very open with whoever we might bring on as to whether, you know, what the status or stability of that position would be in the long term. This, this actually happens pretty frequently, and many times, these are continuing positions. These particular ones, you know, I would expect that these would be ongoing needs that we would have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So my next question is on page six, which is the personnel changes summary. Or no, it's on mine, it's page six. I don't know what it is on yours. Yeah, those, can you give me an idea on the four FTEs for non-sworn response unit? You had indicated that they would be responding to specific issues. Could you expound on that and let me know what, what those specific types of issues are?
This is Danielle. I will hand that question off to somebody in our police department that may be able to speak a little bit more eloquently to that than I would be able to.
Yeah, this is interim police chief Adam Heffley. Are you hearing me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the non-sworn response unit is, encompasses a couple of different things, but typically those calls that those personnel would be tasked with responding would, would include things that, where there's a report that needs to be taken, but it doesn't require a sworn officer or somebody with a badge and a gun to complete that task. Just to throw out some, pardon me, to throw out some examples, I would, I would use a, an auto burglary that occurred previous day, something to that effect. The goal of the exercise is, as we are attempting to fill vacant positions and, and fighting just kind of the, the loss of qualified candidates putting in and stuff, is to make sure that we're able to meet service levels and finding different ways to, to achieve those service levels. So there's, there's kind of a laundry list of different calls that, that could be applied to that group, but for, for an overarching concept, we try to think of a police call for service in which somebody needs a report taken for, for follow-up later perhaps, or for insurance purposes, or something along that line that doesn't actually require a uniformed sworn officer to handle that deal. I hope that explains it, if you have a follow-up.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and follow up on that? Is that, Chief Heffley, is that, do you see something that, that emergency communications would, would make that decision? Would these be things that weren't emergencies, and therefore that would be internal among the, you know, among your office that's making or sending these units out?
Yes. Typically, what we will do is we'll outline a series of calls that at least appear on their face to be appropriate for a person in that position to, to respond to. We would not put that off on a, on a dispatch function through emergency communications. That needs to be a supervisor in the patrol division. We give, we will give those personnel pretty explicit instructions that if a situation starts to devolve, or, or they need a, a uniformed officer to respond, to be able to just reach out and have one respond. But this is able to continue a level of service in a, in a state where we're just not able to keep up with attrition and retirements and whatnot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson, can I piggyback on that as well?
Sure, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just, since we're on the subject, I wanted to ask if there was a possibility, Chief, if those office, those non-sworn personnel would also be able to be part of that county initiative on the kind of alternative responses for folks on mental health crises, crises and other issues?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a whole other conversation when we start getting into adding other agencies and other programs like that. What, what we're trying to accomplish right now is with a, you know, a shortage of patrol officers to assign to the patrol division, we need to find a way to take some of that call load down to, to allow the officers that are on the street that are sworn to respond to those, those calls themselves. One other potential for this, this program would be if we do identify somebody in the, in between us running in an academy for new recruited officers, that we could onboard somebody quickly, start training them to do other functions until that a police academy would start. That way, we aren't losing quality candidates because of the timing issue or something that, of, of that nature. So I guess to directly answer your question, that would be a whole lot more conversation that would need to be had if we're talking about joining the county program to apply these people to, but that was not the original intended purpose of this.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. So just one more follow-up on that. So what I'm seeing is that you've got eight positions here, are six of them staying in the department and two are being transferred out? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Answer is that, and I got just two more short ones on the slides. The answer is that, and I got just two more short ones on the slides. Unfunded requests. So what I'm seeing, based on the number of positions that have been asked for that are unfunded, the amount of unfunded requests, does that include just the salaries or something else? Because if it just includes the salaries, those are pretty high numbers.
This is Danielle Bushcutter, Budget and Strategic Initiatives Administrator. It includes more than just the salaries.
Okay.
So one of those kind of key drivers, for example, in prosperity and economic security are some of those contractual services with some of those other agencies that may help us make some progress in some of those strategies identified in that particular area. So it is kind of that full package of the request, the FTEs plus those, those supplemental requests for contractual services and, and things like that. So it does go beyond just the, the personnel request.
Thank you. Because I was about ready to apply for some of them, because some of them were $10 million each, so. I was like, wow, that's a lot of money. My last one on the slides is under the, the outcome, unmistakable identity. So my question on that is, is the last little bullet point down there where it says Funding for Scholarships and Partner Agencies. I know you talked about some, some of the ones that, that includes. I think you also said something about Parks and Recs programs that have, have scholarships. Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes. So this includes the We Folks Scholarship Fund that we have internally. It also includes $30,000 for the Arts Center that we have been helping to support some scholarship funding for them as well over the last several years. So it's, it's capturing both sides of that.
Okay, that was, that was exactly what I thought. So thank you very much. Those are the, just on the slides, those are the questions I have.
Other questions by Commissioners? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
The, the, these aren't in any particular order, so I apologize, but the money set aside for neighborhoods, I think you said was coming out of the Housing Initiatives Can someone remind me if that is the same amount that we set aside for neighborhoods last year outside of the CDBG process? And, and I'm kind of curious how staff imagines these funds will be distributed. We don't have a program particularly for that right now.
This is Danielle Bushcutter. I am going to ask somebody from PDS to kind of help me out with this. My recollection is yes, and it's in development, but I would appreciate some, either verification of that or some additional details.
Good evening, Commissioners. Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. The amount is the $20,000 that funds the four neighborhoods that are currently receiving funds, and this was their pre-funding before there were cuts made, and then it was increased. We anticipate that bringing forth to you in your 2023 budget, a more comprehensive program that would be competitive in developing that program.
Thank you. Another item that was on the list of unfunded items, sorry, let me find the right slide here. Apologize.
Is it up there, Courtney?
Is it up there? No. It was a specific list, and it had alleys on it. Oh, the capital budget changes. There you go. The alleyway rehabilitation, I, I mean, I'll have sort of a general question about some of the unfunded items, but one concern I had had in speaking with MSO at some point is particularly downtown where the trash trucks are in the alleyways, and it's very close, and there's many layers of sundry concrete and asphalt that can be kind of dangerous, present some dangerous situations for our employees. So I just wanted to maybe be sure we were being wise in this particular item, or that MSO perhaps weigh in and, and let me rest assured that we're not ignoring a safety issue.
David Wagner, Director of MSO, Mike Goddard on too. He may have something else to add with that. I think we're, we're obviously aware that there, the alleys are in poor condition, not only downtown, across the city, and I believe this was the, the first idea that we would put additional monies over in on that, and just truly because of shortfalls in some of the other areas, we, we made some tough choices and, and as an alternative to some of the other things that we saw, we thought this would be something that we could continue to defer, I guess is one way to look at that. But you're absolutely right, Commissioner Shipley. It is a concern. It's a safety concern that we need to address at some point in time. So it was, it was just a choice. Mike, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
Sure. Mike Lawless, Deputy Director for MSO. Yeah, I mean, all, all cuts that we make are tough. Certainly, this, this is a, a large reduction in the alley, but it doesn't completely eliminate the funding for that. For this year, I believe there's in the neighborhood of about $1 million for alley rehab, and so with that, we're going to tackle some of the, well, the highest priority ones that are out there. By no means will the $1 million or even the $780,000 that we're looking at for '22 solve all the deferred maintenance that we have out there. It, it took us a long time to get to the condition that we're in, and it's going to take us some time to work out, but we have the program started and, you know, we've kind of got that, a little bit of momentum behind us, and, you know, if, if we manage this as a one-year reduction, then I, you know, going forward, we certainly want to continue to push for additional funding for, for alley rehabilitation.
Thank you. So kind of in that, and this might be a better one for you, Craig. With these items that are on this list and these other unfunded requests, I just want to make sure I understand that staff was asked to make these cuts based on their own judgment of their own departments. Is that correct?
More or less. I mean, this is, this was kind of towards the end of the process where we really did have, in, in meeting the need to stay at the, at the, you know, level property tax rate and understanding where we were with some of the other priorities. We, we had to make a certain kind of financial mark to hit that point, and so we went back out to departments and we asked them to match, more or less match, where they were previous year. And we didn't necessarily prescribe how they'd get it, get to that number, other than, you know, try to, try to align with priorities of the strategic plan, which is, you know, our first and last thing we always try and do. But this is where you're really starting to just say, well, there's so much compromise, you know, let's, what's the best way to go at this point? So I, I would characterize these reductions as that. There was, there were many other places they could have gone, but this is, this is generally, most of these were capital and maintenance items that we came up with, which are deferrals. The capital is always a deferral. It's not an elimination unless you dispose of the asset. So that was where the compromise was versus, you know, cutting into pay, into personnel, which is, you know, was more ongoing and more sustainable usually, but it's more difficult if you're not going to sustain it and you're not, and you're not going to identify a service reduction that's, that can be sustained. Long answer, but...
And then, you know, the, this is some of the capital budget changes, and that, but the unfunded request, is there somewhere a list of all those things that I can look at? Because I gather it's not just things cut from the CIP and salary. It might be things that staff suggested, like in a, a wish list that would never have risen to the level where I might see it, but may or may not in the future be a really good idea.
Yeah, if this, and it just gives me a chance really quickly to expand on this. I think Danielle did a good job of presenting it, but I really want to say, the reason we decided to include this, typically, I would not include this list because this is, you know, we endeavor to present this budget as a team. There are a lot of work that's gone into this, a lot of compromises, and not every team member knows every part of every budget, every part of this budget, but we do try and talk about the top priorities, and we do try and understand that, you know, it's a, you know, we're, we're in it together, and these are all interconnected. So when you see these unfunded requests, the reason we wanted to show those is because this was really, you know, there was quite a bit of an excitement in, when we first approached the budget because of the strategic plan. We've worked so hard over the last 18 months to build the strategic plan, and really, you know, we're, the community's telling us, this is what we need. This is where we want to go. And that's, you know, that's not a language that's been spoken here in a long time. And so that was, these unfunded requests are out of enthusiasm to try to go to a new level, to try and respond to what the community's articulating and its strategic planning needs. And so I'm, I'm very excited about that, too, because we kind of did take some lids off and said, what innovations, what new programs, what kinds of things would you like to do? And so that's why you see such a list. I don't think anything like this has been generated, is certainly in this community for a long time, and in this building for a long time. So that's what this list is. I don't think, I think everybody's realistic that this is the kind of deeper investment that we're probably not going to get to for a while, but our hope is, is that as we do the work of realignment and we do the work that we're going to have to do to, you know, to get these, this budget kind of sustainable, we might reposition some and align our resources to these top priorities. So there might be some real innovations in this list of 87 positions that we'd rather do than some of the legacy that we're in, in it for, and that we've been funding for decades maybe, because we're choosing a top priority, and we're going to let go of some of that legacy. You know, that, that's going to take two or three or four years of real tough conversation, but I think starting with this, with this unfunded request and getting the innovation and the enthusiasm to meet the needs of the community is a good place for us to be at this stage.
A quick question about the two FTEs for the Housing Initiatives Division. You said they were kind of being transferred out. What will their relationship be with the new planning office, or how will they get their direction? What will, I mean, without, obviously, knowing that you have an entire plan. I'm just trying to reimagine moving those, the coordination that would be between what seems like two different departments.
This is, this is a, these are unfilled positions right now, so these would be new hires, or they'd be, you know, transfers from another department of somebody that wanted to go do this work or that had the expertise to do this work related to housing and, and homeless support, addressing those things. So these would not be, you know, transfers of incumbents to do that. We reflected them as transfers to say that this is our repositioning between, within the General Fund, but these wouldn't be actual physical transfers.
This, just one more question for you, Craig, because I, I feel like it's important. My experience in investiture sort of requires me to believe that all of our staff is the most qualified, and in, in our attempt to raise the market rate, is it your studied experience that we are losing talent to nearby markets, Kansas City, Topeka, wherever?
It is. You know, and I would say this is going around, this is every organization around the country right now, public or otherwise, there's an unusual circumstance, but what we, in 2018, we brought McGrath and Associates in to look at this, and they were finding that we were in that situation, and in the intervening years, we, we have seen the loss of some talent in key positions. But there are other factors as well. There's a lot of the compression issues. Some of this money is going to address compression issues where we can't get people to apply for promotion because they're just too close to the, that supervisory level, being asked to do a lot more, take on more responsibility. And so it, while we're not losing them necessarily, we're losing the opportunity to, to get some people ascending into some leadership positions that we need filled. Externally, yes, we have, we are experiencing very high turnover rate right now, and I would say that that's both because of what's happening in the economic conditions that everybody's doing, but I think it's also because we're not properly positioned within the market for some key positions that are very, very high, they're sought after. And one of the other things that we understood about our 2018 plan was that these are some of the lower-paid employees that we're not seeing those, those increases. And as you know, you know, some of the bargaining units that we've worked with, collective bargaining units, that was where some of our money was going, and those are kind of in the middle, middle pay ranges, but some of the other parts of our, our lower-paid employees at the beginning levels of their careers, they were not getting addressed. So that's, that's especially exacerbated right now, when, you know, we've heard all about the lifeguard situation and some of the lower-paid employees, nobody's able to get those positions filled. So we were not positioned well in that. So this will address that at a critical time. But yeah, our turnover rate, I, I said something to our Human Resources Director in a, in a meeting, and I said, you know, I think, don't we have something like 30 or, or so positions? And she looked at me with wide eyes and said, is, try more than double that, which is, is exceptional for us.
One, one, the last thing, I think, probably for Danielle, and I will confess a frustration with the, the online portal. I'm not amazing at operating it, but it seems like there, I saw in a few places that I couldn't re-identify, some things that were not, not miscellaneous exactly, but not identified or not connected to any of our strategic factors. It was, it was a very vague term, so I didn't know if she could help me know what kind of things might have been falling into that category.
This is Danielle Bushcutter. I can try to take a go at it, and then if there are any kind of additional specific questions, I'd be happy to, to dig into those. We do have a classification on the revenue side that are kind of miscellaneous revenues. So those typically capture some of those kind of one-time revenues that we don't necessarily anticipate receiving every year, so it can capture some things like sale of assets. I think we have some, some additional kind of one-time revenues that we, we classify as miscellaneous. We also have kind of that category on the expense side as well, that in different funds kind of represent some different things, so it depends a little bit on kind of what fund we're talking about, but usually there's an opportunity to expand within our, our open public access site, so I'm happy to kind of go through training with that at some point, or provide some kind of step-by-step details we can put on our website to really figure out what exactly each of those line items is, even though at a higher level, we classify them as miscellaneous. Taking one step up, one of the things that we didn't include in, let me get to the slide. This particular slide was some of those kind of duplication costs. So like I mentioned, the transfers, for example, we didn't want to capture the transfer, and then the expense that the transfer was helping to support. So this happened quite a bit with our, our capital improvement plan, so we may have some sort of... So we may have some sort of project that is being supported by the general fund. So we transfer dollars out of the general fund so that it can show up in our capital projects fund. We didn't want to capture that expense twice. So that's why some of these numbers don't tie out exactly, because we pulled that out of this particular chart as well as our debt service fund, for example. So those are some of the, some of the things that we, we pulled out of this, just so we don't capture things twice that show up in that open gov report twice, kind of by default. So we wanted to provide a little bit more of an accurate picture here, but it, I think, regardless of which way we go, there's a little bit of confusion that kind of comes, comes with that. So I don't know if that answered your question, but hopefully that at least provides a little bit of context.
Thank you.
You done?
I'm done, thanks. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, could we go to the prosperity and economic security slide, please? I believe I heard that this includes the operation expenditures for farmland. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And so that amount is roughly $1,200,000?
Yes.
Okay. There's another aspect of the recommended budget with regard to farmland. It's $5,250,000 in capital funding?
Yes, that is correct.
And that doesn't appear on this slide. Where is it in our, is it in our slides? And if so, where is it?
Yes, that's a good question and I think it's a really good example of that this is not perfect. So it is showing up in connected cities because of our current account structure. We weren't able to, with that structure, pull that out of connected cities unless we did it manually to put it here. So that is where the capital expenditure is showing up.
I guess my concern with that is that we're seeing this in two different places and that's inconsistent treatment unless there's a reason to treat them inconsistently. I think it tends to, to undercount what we're actually spending for prosperity and economic security. Are there other expenditures besides the, the operations from the farmland fund and from the, the $5,250,000 in farmland capital expenditures? Are there other, is there other money in this recommended budget that will be going to, to the farmland remediation and property?
This is Danielle. The short answer to that question is no. I think the longer answer to that question is there are a number, number of hours of additional staff support for staff that are not funded out of the, the farmland fund that helps support that operation and that function. So that is not captured anywhere. That's been a consistent issue we, we've been dealing with. But the, the, the operations of the farmland fund are housed within the farmland fund and that debt, future general obligation debt for the capital side is identified in the budget. So those are the, the two main cost centers for farmland in the budget.
Is anyone tracking the staff's time that you referred to earlier so that we would have some idea what the magnitude is of that expense?
I would pass that question off to some of our MSO folks. I don't know if they can provide some additional clarity and context related to that. It's not something I have offhand.
Good, good evening. This is Trevor Flynn, Assistant Director with Municipal Services and Operation. We, there's a couple of components there. Our water quality lab staff that does the routine data collection and the monitoring that's kind of scheduled. We, we definitely have that staff time accounted for. Where we get a little, where we lack some of that detail is with some of our field staff that do a lot of support work out there. They're out there checking some of the pumps. There's a lot of folks in and out of the bag warehouse, doing some maintenance items whenever we have a, we had a break-in out there, so we had facilities out there. So we're losing some context with some of our support staff, but when we're, when we're focusing on some of that remedial action support for part of our obligations, there's a lot of staff involved in that, that, that are associated with that, that aren't funded necessarily through the farmland fund. So it's, so it's a, a little bit of yes and no to your answer there.
I guess, I follow that they're not being funded through the farmland fund, but somebody's having to pay for it. And, you know, the, according to this recommended budget, as I understand it, the money in the farmland fund's going to be gone essentially at the end of next year, even though we haven't been charging all the expenditures to that fund. I believe that we, the estimate is that we have $40 million more of remediation that we're going to have to pay for. And I, I'm beginning to think that that may be an undercount. You know, I really believe we need to get some assistance from the federal government, the EPA, the state on this, and I'd really like to have us have good numbers. Let me try to do that. I have a couple of questions on the CIP. These are specific projects. It's my understanding that the 27th Street Bridge replacement is not funded. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I also believe that there are two projects for the outdoor pool that have been, funding has been recommended for. Is that correct?
I'm trying to pull up the exact list, but I think you are correct in that.
From reading the project detail worksheet, it sounded to me as if those projects were mutually exclusive. And if you did the, the rebuild of the pool, you wouldn't need to do the improvement that would, was a smaller project. Why are we funding, why are we recommending funding both of these?
So I'll kind of talk at a high level about kind of the process we went through and then I invite somebody from Parks and Rec to kind of talk about those projects specifically. The way we went through kind of the prioritization process is to utilize the CIP guidelines that were adopted a couple of years ago, have the departments go through a department score and then we put together peer review teams to provide some peer review and that really drove the, the funding recommendations. I think you are, are right in your assessment that if, if that larger renovation project took place, we wouldn't have to do the pool slide. But I, my understanding is, and I hope somebody from Parks and Rec pops on and corrects me if I'm wrong, is that some of the, the smaller project would have to be done if we didn't move forward with that larger renovation project because eventually we'll get to a point where there are some safety concerns. But Mark, I don't know if you have some additional kind of context you might, you might add to that.
Yeah, Mark Hacker, Assistant Director with Parks and Recreation. Commissioner Bulley, you're correct. The smaller project is a $350,000 amenity project. So basically it improves the amenities around the pool. The $4 million project is a more complete renovation of the pool body itself. So I would agree with you, if we do the 4 million, we may not need to do the 350,000.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. I guess my question for staff is, you know, when, when would that come out? The $350,000 project.
Mark Hacker, Assistant Director. The, the way it's currently slated is the smaller projects in 2023 and then the larger projects in 2025. So I'm hoping by the time we have a year or two more under a belt, we'll have a better idea of how long that actual pool body is going to last. We're starting to see some pretty significant structural issues down there, so, you know, it's kind of trying to look into the, the magic ball and figure out when this might fail. So right now, you know, we're a couple of years out, we think. It could be where the $4 million project needs to come up and replace that $350,000 project, but right now we're projecting it out a few years.
Good.
I would like to follow up on a couple of your items that you brought up. The farmland one, can somebody speak to what we are doing to try to potentially capture federal or state dollars to help pay for that?
I'll start off. We, we have, we have asked for proposals from some agencies that will help us secure federal grants and that was something we initiated a few months ago, in understanding there was going to be very competitive and there was a lot of money that was going to come out of DC. And so we're excited that we will have those resources available to us for specific things. And then, you know, obviously the, you know, roughly $1 trillion infrastructure package does target, I think, some environmental aspects, too. And we're hoping that they, the work that's happening over the next couple of weeks will give us some definitions so that we understand what the infrastructure, what, what infrastructure needs will come out of there. So farmland is a favorite on my list for some of that understanding that where the, you know, the, the side effects of the pollution that we're, that Lawrence is dealing with, you know, literally fed the world with the fertilizer generation that would, went out around the, the country and the world and the crop, the crops that were grown through that. So I do think we have a good case to make, especially since the, the fund that we associated with this project, nowhere near covers what the expenses are going to be. So it is a favorite of mine to make grant applications when we get better definition from the feds on where those come from. But truly, any infrastructure dollars that help us on our very substantial capital improvement plan over the next five years will go to bottom line. So I'm, I'm, I think we will be very aggressive in how we pursue grants that are a good match for the programs as they're aligned.
Thank you. So the grant person that you're proposing to hire, would, that would be part of their job, just to hunt these out?
Right. This would be a scope of services as a consulting arrangement. In addition, you know, obviously we have some, we've had some success with federal grants with internal staff, but this is really somebody to help, help us, help guide us that, that does this every day, all day and has connections in Washington DC and with our federal officials.
Thanks.
This is Danielle Stoddard, Assistant City Manager. I, I just wanted to add in addition to the, the, the ideas that Mr. Owen shared, I will say that staff has reached out to the Environmental Protection Agency requesting a meeting and we've been working to set that up with them and answer some of their preliminary questions in hopes that we can identify some possible funding through that channel.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate that. So I wanted to piggyback on what Commissioner Bulley said about making sure we cost items to the job, how important that is, because we can't really truly understand and capture the actual cost of a project if we're not tracking it on a per project basis. So I would hope that we would make better efforts to ensure that those costs are actually being allocated appropriately to the job. I'd appreciate it. So I want to turn just a minute to that bridge project. The bridge project, the 27th Street Bridge Project, the description of it said that it was end of its, it was near the end of its life cycle for that bridge and would need to be addressed in the near future. I thought it was interesting that when I looked at the score for that, it was 33, but then you look at the score for the events center out at the Free State Pool, that scored a 38. So I was really wondering how that disparity could, could be or how that could show up that way. And I looked at the actual line item matrix for it and one thing that kind of struck out for me is that the events center scored on a quality of life three, but the bridge only scored on a quality of life of one. So I'm not for sure if that's, if you can compare them or it just seems odd that, you know, the potential for a bridge to fail only has a quality of life impact of one. So I was wondering if somebody could speak to that a little bit?
I think kind of start and, and hopefully some municipal services and operations staff that have kind of been looking at this will, will jump in as well. So I think some of the things that, that stuck out as we were kind of reviewing this as well is the health and safety criteria, along with the infrastructure criteria and some of the long-term planning as well. So I think that long-term planning is one of those areas that the events center scored higher in because it had some of that public engagement and, and kind of public scoping and vetting process that, that has already taken place with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that the bridge project hasn't yet gone through. I think both of those projects are 2025 projects. So it's very likely as we get closer to 2025 and some of that work starts to happen, that I would anticipate that bridge project going up in score, actually. So I think those are some of the things that we noted and highlighted. I don't know if anyone else on the, the MSO side would, who's been working on this, would have some additional comments as well.
Thank you. I did notice on the scoring matrix that four of the top five projects that scored the highest were Parks and Recs and then there was one, or top six, I should say, then there was one, Stormwater one. And you know, there's a long list on this project list, but I just thought it was interesting that the top five out of six, I should say, were Parks and Rec projects.
I'd like to go back to the farmland, if that's okay. On the five and a quarter million that is in the recommended budget for the farmland capital, how is that being paid? What fund is that from?
That project is identified to be debt funded. So ultimately that annual debt service payment will come out of our debt service fund.
Okay. And if you remind me, the debt service fund is paid for by property tax?
Yes.
So essentially Lawrence residents, property taxes are going to pay for the remediation of farmland and in this recommended budget?
Yes, it will be, it will be supporting those debt service payments.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Bulley, at the moment? Go for another?
So I, I think one of the benefits of going forth is that most of my, most of my questions are checked off, but I did have-
Open you, cover the rest.
Well, I, I just want to bring one kind of macro question and I acknowledge that, that we have a lot to talk about this evening and we haven't done public comment yet, but one of the things that I was looking at in the budget by outcome area and thinking about our strategic plan and priority-based budgeting and how that will operate over time is how we get to a point where, or will we get to a point, is it our intention, particularly given the overlapping services, things that can be marked in, in more than one category? Or Danielle, you mentioned the internal service, debt service and transfers, kind of having to pick a spot. Is there a way that at some point we can, we can look at this in, in our prioritization? So not just having a strategic plan, but prioritizing that. I think particularly around prosperity and economic security is 2% of our budget, but it's literally the thing that will keep us from raising taxes and cutting services. Is there a correlation in the success of providing more funds to that? Looking at our unmistakable identity and tourism, you know, that's how we get increased sales tax revenue. So I just, I'm, I'm just curious if there is an intent eventually to get to a point at which we can kind of, you know, we talked about having control over the levers and the ways that we, we apply those. What does that look like over time?
I'm, I'm happy to start, but I know Craig will, will probably provide a much, much better detail and context to it. The short answer is yes. The, the short answer is as we really get into priority-based budgeting, the goal is to be able to say farmland, the full cost of farmland, using that as an example, costs- able to say farmland, the full cost of farmland, using that as an example, cost us X. And this is where it can be found within our budget and within our strategic plan. So that's ultimately where we are going. This is just the first attempt, and that first step, in kind of moving us in that direction, using our kind of historical functions and departments and chart of accounts to start to make that transition. So I think, you know, each year that we really present the budget to you, it will be much more detailed, kind of in this framework and in this context, to really help, to your point, Commissioner Ananda, be able to really kind of play and look at those different levers that are at your disposal, to really talk about those funding priorities at that kind of macro level across the entire strategic plan and ultimately across our entire budget. But I don't know, Craig, if you have anything else to add, but that's kind of my initial reaction.
No, that's absolutely correct. The thing I would magnify point and maybe, it's important that we understand, I know the commission does, because you've challenged us over multiple years to go to a new place in the way that we're doing our work. There's enormous complexity in us transitioning into this kind of a budget approach that we've been at diligently, and we're also changing our accounting systems, which we've talked about in different meetings, at the same time, you know, a very old system. And we're thinking strategically. So it's not just the budgeting approach and the way that we're accounting for things, all changing at the same time, but now we're overlaying what, in my opinion, is a very sophisticated approach to strategic planning for municipality. So all that being said, and we're directly responsive to your question, there are also some things that are very important to our community but aren't as expensive as others. So it's very important that we have utility systems, for instance, and those are always very expensive. Whereas you could do some important programming, say, economic development, which I think was to your point. We can be highly leveraged and make a big impact with some investment in the way we do economic development that can be a huge multiplier to what we do. So that's an example of, we may always be at a small percentage of the total pie, being in some of these areas that are very important and where we make high impact.
Yeah, I think we'll see that over time, kind of continue to shift as we have conversations about what that looks like and where we want to put that. And how interesting would it be to have those prioritized, even in a percentage way and just as an experiment in our budget, how we allocate those things? So thanks for indulging me.
Well, Commissioner Ananda, if it makes you feel any better, if we put the $5.25 million in there, it would double the amount we put in development, okay?
So it would be 4%?
Yeah. Great example.
How do you feel that farmland remediation is economic development? I guess there's some-
Oh.
Boy, it's a stretch.
Yeah. Other questions?
That was the only one I didn't have checked off. Thank you.
A few questions, which I think I know the answer to, but I think for the public, and make sure I'm clear on it. Since we're on economic development, the funding, the recommended funding for the Chamber, Peaslee, BTBC, those sort of partners, that's in here and is recommended to be the same as the previous years, or any changes there?
This is Danielle Bushcutter, and I know Britt just popped on. I think there are changes. I can provide kind of the high-level funding, and then Britt, please jump in and provide some additional context, and I apologize for the big flipping. I don't have that memorized. For, let me keep going. For Peaslee, in the prosperity and economic security, there is $130,000 here for Peaslee, $220,000 for the Chamber, and $295,000 for BTBC, which includes operations Phase III and the incentives program. I will pass it off to Britt to add some additional context and I think answer Part B of that question.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Britt Crumkano, Economic Development Administrator for the city. As far as our outside economic development agencies, for the most part, we kept everything flat, with the exception of Peaslee. We've actually taken about $60,000 out of that to fund other initiatives within our budget. Peaslee typically gets about $200,000 a year, but for the most part, they're sufficient at this point. What they did request, and that we are going to fund, is $130,000 for an entrepreneurship incubator out at Peaslee. So they have about 8,500 square feet that we're going to turn into this entrepreneurship support facility with all sorts of additional, it can be maker space, it can be offices. So it has to do specifically with entrepreneurship support. So that's what they are getting. But in terms of the traditional $200,000 for operations, they no longer needed that. And so this was an initiative that we felt would really help us move the needle when it comes to our strategic plans, especially around entrepreneurship and economic development. So that's probably the biggest change. I think we shaved off about $5,000 from the BTBC initiative fund, or incentives fund. And so that was the major changes to those agencies.
Thank you, Britt. And while we have you, can you talk a little bit about this? I mean, we have the job description, and Danielle gave us the job description on the ED analyst, but tell us how that's a little bit, how that's going to push us forward to have some more help in that area for you?
Yeah, Britt Crumkano, Economic Development Administrator. Yes, I'll be happy to address that. Right now, we only have one full-time economic development staff member, which is me, and we really have more than a full-time job already, which is why Diane Stoddard has to pitch in and spend her time as well, working on economic development. Currently, our efforts in economic development really centers around incentives.
Anything from the analytics to the processing of approvals to compliance to reporting to reimbursing. For example, in 2022, we estimate we're going to run about $2.5 million in reimbursements through the Economic Development Office. So all those things take a significant amount of time. And then on the compliance end, our incentive programs are very long-lived. Tax abatements are 10 years. TIPS are 20, TDDs are 22. So the more projects we approve, the more administration and compliance and reporting there is, and it just becomes, it grows exponentially. We've always known this. We knew at some point we were going to reach the limit to capacity, which is, we have reached that capacity. So in order to have any staff time to work on any of the strategic plan, and as you know, we have the Economic Development Strategic Plan, as well as the City Strategic Plan, we've got several initiatives and multitude of tactics. So we just don't have the capacity to devote to that without bringing on additional staff. We also have no one cross-trained, so we're kind of in a precarious position. And if anything could happen to me, I'm not sure. I think it would leave the city in a difficult situation. So we just, you know, we've been operating with one staff member for 10 years. So it's just now, we've just now grown, outgrown this one position.
Thank you, Britt. Just to be sure, the $400,000 we've talked about for the, I mean, redoing the development code, that's in the recommended budget? Yes?
Yes, the land development code work, yes, that's included in the recommended budget.
Kind of on the human infrastructure side, the 2.5% that is across the board for all employees, absent the unions, which I'll ask that next question. Is that across the board, 2.5%?
This is Danielle. Yes, and I don't know if Lori Carnahan with our efficient, or engaged and empowered teams wants to provide any additional context to that, but yes.
And then I know we're going to have the union agreements, the three union agreements next week. I guess without previewing those per se, I assume are those in this budget? Or are we going to make any, depending what we do next week, will that make us change the budget?
Those are accommodated.
Accommodated?
Yes.
I assume so. I just wanted to be sure. Lori, did you have anything to add? You jumped on, okay. So, and I don't know if this is for you, Craig, or Danielle. Obviously, we're using the ARPA funds, you know, to make sure we can, you know, move our goals forward, which I certainly support. If sales tax, for example, comes in stronger this year and comes in stronger next year, what do you see the use of those funds being? Are we going to then have some ARPA funds to use on other projects? Or you see that going into, you know, the bottom, you know, going into the reserve fund, which I think is going to be at 21%? Or do you have a plan for how, you know, if the next six months comes in strong on sales tax, what direction we head with those ARPA funds?
I would suggest that we start really planning for the, getting the lines back together, the revenue and the expenditure lines back together and get the structural deficit that we see coming taken care of. You know, there are two, and the 101, and I tried to be very clear in, you know, waving the red flag so we all are going in eyes wide open. But, you know, one-time expenditures for one-time revenue, ongoing expenditures for ongoing revenue, that's something we need to get back to. So it depends on where, if we see sales tax and we think that it's predictable that we're going to be up at higher levels, those are things that we can count on and we'll project those in multiple years. Those would be, that's the good kind of revenue that we can start to address the ongoing structural deficit with. If we see some one-time expenditures, those are great opportunities for us to do things that aren't going to necessarily be expenditures that we have to do year after year after year. So I think we will probably have a nice list of those categorized that way that can make some real impacts here, and we've got a long list of those as well. And there's, I would also say that there's, you know, we received $19 million in federal ARPA assistance. We have way more than $19 million of qualifying expenditures for that. So if we do get some more revenue that offsets where we're using some other areas, we still have opportunities to do good work.
Thank you for that. My last couple of questions relate to the housing initiatives. Can, the two new positions, the housing project specialists, do we have an idea what the kind of job description would be? What are you seeing as what they would be doing?
This is Assistant City Manager Brandon McQuire. Craig, are you okay with me jumping in here?
I was counting on it.
We're on the same wavelength, that's good. So Mayor, to your question about sort of position description, scope of work, we are drafting and will be working with some of our partners, actually, including Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services, as well as Douglas County and Burton Ash to draft the position description for the homelessness initiatives coordinator. And so part of the grant funds we plan on receiving for that position means that we need to fulfill some of the work expected by the state, so they will have a say in that. For the project specialists, we really envision sort of a two-fold approach. One is an embedded position currently within our Parks and Rec Department. And as you know, that's a department that receives a lot of contact with the public related to activities associated with homelessness. And so that's going to be an embedded position, kind of just formalizing what is already taking place, kind of on a day-to-day, with day-to-day business. The second position will be more of a focused project specialist, project manager, that will help with our planning initiatives, the system-level planning initiatives and evaluation of plan implementation that's going on, and then also working collaboratively with some of our community service agencies on those three goals that we're targeting for city resources. Number one being outreach, street outreach. Number two being emergency sheltering. And number three being rapid rehousing. And so working with our vendors, who we expect to have service agreements, service-level agreements with through a RFP process, as well as other partner agencies, maybe, for example, Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority or tenants-to-homeowners as they pursue opportunities for projects that add housing stock, so that then we can work with our partners at the county and their vendors on programming those and supporting the people who are in them.
Thank you for that. I know that, of course, we've rolled our outside agency funding and our special alcohol tax funding into this kind of initiative program, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I guess, and so that would be a process, just a process at a later time in which we go through, kind of like we've done historically, an application process, but now it'll be focused on these primary outcomes?
Assistant City Manager Brandon McQuire. Yes, Mayor, with the resource constraints around this proposed budget, that is- That is really where we're at, is focusing dollars that have previously gone to other purposes or outcomes, and trying to be very intentional about that, but also trying to work on alternatives for some of those agencies that very realistically may see this or take this as a loss based on their historic experience with us.
Yeah. Well, certainly, I think- Part of the process we go through. I guess the one, kind of when I look at this, the primary outcomes of homeless outreach, emergency sheltering, rapid rehousing, it seems to me that kind of an important corollary to all of that is either what we call stabilization or shelter diversion, i.e. keeping people in their houses so we don't have to rapidly rehouse them. You know, you don't want to create a system that they lose their housing just so we have to pay to put them someplace else. We don't really have that stated there, but am I safe to assume that keeping people in their houses and kind of stabilization is part of this idea as well?
Assistant City Manager Brandon McQuire. Yes, that's absolutely correct. I think what I've learned and observed is that any good service provider who's really worth their beans is doing, they're doing diversion. And diversion in the sense that they're trying to find that alternative to being homeless. And, you know, that's a lot of times just questioning and doing good social work, you know, asking folks, where can you go? Who can we call? How can we help you get there? To try to, you know, help us move towards that goal where homelessness is rare and very brief when it happens.
And I certainly agree with that. I just want to make sure as we move towards that outside funding that we kind of make sure that's somehow incorporated in what we're directing the funds to, so we can consider that. And I guess the only other thing I'd say on that is, you know, obviously, one of our goals is housing first, which is what we're working towards. And again, you know, all of those things are assumed here in housing first, but I think anything that pushes us toward- think anything that pushes us towards that goal is something we have to consider funding out of these funds. Again, probably one in the same, but I just, since it's not specifically stated, I just want to throw that out there. Okay, that's all my questions.
Mayor?
Yep.
May I ask one more question?
Of course.
So one of the questions that we're looking at this evening is the recommendation that the mill levy remain flat. And I know Craig, you like to bring us options, and I'm just curious because I think that it's something that is important to understand, and this is my assumption, that if the commission were to say we want to reduce the mill levy, that any of those positions, for example, or some of our CIP items would be removed from our list of to-do. And if we were to want to increase the mill levy, and obviously you're not asking for that, but are there some dreams that could be realized in that? Or is that just we would do more of what we're doing that we're reducing as a result of not increasing the mill levy?
Thanks for the question. I mean, it goes back to what I said, there are millions of options, and I'm not dodging, I'm just saying that if we were facing increased opportunity, we would want to, I could offer some options on how we think that those next incremental moves would best fit what we understand. You certainly will have very important perspectives related to that, and the community would as well. And likewise, if we wanted to reduce our, what we're proposing to spend here to match a lowered tax rate, we would offer some alternatives using the same process. So the lowest priorities we would try to address, and if we could improve where we're at, we would offer the highest priorities.
Thanks.
Other questions before we open it to public comment?
I was going to say, I like Commissioner Bowley have some things in the CIP that I would love to bandy about with you, but I think I'd rather hear public comment and make that part of our comments if that works.
Yeah, I think that's great. That's, go ahead and open it up to public comment. First, we'll ask for public comment of people here and then folks online. So any person here would like to make public comment? Come on up, you'll have three minutes.
Hopefully it won't take me that long.
Okay.
Phil Engelhardt, as I've written or communicated with several of you, we're kind of late to the 2022 process, but we're trying to get our feet wet with respect to '23 and beyond. Strategic plan and budgeting, you know, I sent a thing out today, and if you all saw it, that's fine, it's in the agenda. Try to make it less than three minutes. Really, we're really impressed with the strategic plan and its potential. We're really looking forward to seeing next year, you know, a year from now, how those scorecard indicators line up with the outcomes with respect to the budget that you all are approving this year. You know, how much progress have we made on those outcomes? And I realize, as the city administrator said, that it's a several-year deal, you're trying to do three different things at one time, you know, which is laudable, but perhaps foolish. You know, the second thing, and I spoke at the break there with Craig and I also had some communication with Brad, when you all are putting together this CIP budget in particular, but the entire budget package for that matter, I think for public consumption, okay, you can't have 100 pages of stuff that involves trying to interpret municipal finance specialties. You've got to condense it down to a form that the public can understand, so that in two years, if you all have to come back and say, hey, we've got to raise the mill levy, okay, you can show us, you can provide us a basis, an historical basis for why you need to do that, deferred maintenance, if that's the deal, then you can show us historically why that needs to be done, and then you can also use it to project forward. So, you know, again, this is high-level view of stuff that I try to write. Hopefully next year, and I think Stuart and I are on the same page here, hopefully next year's budget will more directly indicate the capital expenditures, more directly integrate the CIP into the budget presentation that's made to the public. Because you all seem to be, in some instances anyway, guessing, and I certainly was guessing when I was trying to look at it. So those are my comments, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else present like to make a comment? Seeing none? If a person online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, use the raise your hand function or indicate otherwise, and Shay will call upon you.
Patrick Wilbur?
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Patrick Wilbur, and I just wanted to speak tonight to the pass-through funds that went to the county for fire and medical. The first thing I wanted to do was, in the Say Something Nice Department, was to give props to the city staff and county staff for working on that agreement and continue to work on the agreements. That's going to be great for me as somebody who lives in the city, and there'll be fair agreements, so I'd like to see that happening, and thank you for doing that. The mayor mentioned earlier the goal of keeping people in their houses. And one thing I wanted to address tonight was the people who are almost out of their houses. Right now, if we don't offer some kind of relief, I fear that we're going to see some of these problems recycle themselves with people being pushed out of their homes, perhaps even becoming houseless for a while. I would like to see the city commission redirect those funds that were passed to the county to the taxpayer. Certainly there was a draft budget in mind before that agreement was made, and since those funds went directly to the county, the county obviously is planning on raising their mill levy, which is going to hit all of us, and it's going to be tough for people to take on that raise plus something that remains flat at the city level, because as you know, property valuations are going up quite a bit right now. So it is a tax rate, a flat mill levy is a tax raise, as we know. So what I'm asking you to do is to find, in a $383 million budget, is to find about $2.5 million that you can live without for a year and return that savings to the taxpayers and make sure that all of us are able to pay the bills and all of us can stay in our homes. And next year we can reevaluate this, but I'm not sure people can take on a tax raise at this point after the year we've had. Thanks.
Chris Flowers?
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I just, I'd like to kind of echo those comments that he just made, but also I sent in stuff, so I'm not going to really go on that, but I just want to add that we just gave some of our top, like, we just let it be so that our, some of our employees no longer have to live in Lawrence. Can that be their raise for this year? Because we've already given them something to be competitive with the other cities. And also, I was looking on open payrolls, and like, you can look at like the top 100, like, paid employees of each city and stuff, and then it gives like rankings. And when it comes to like Topeka, like, when it comes to the highest paying cities, we're ranked 152nd, but Topeka's like 168th, Manhattan's 258th, Wichita's 272. It's only when you go and look at the Kansas City suburbs, like, they're the ones that are paying more than us, but the rest of the state, they're paying less. So I was also just thinking, if we're not making our employees live here anymore, are there any jobs that we can let people to commute like maybe once or twice a week from and they do the rest of the work from home? Like, if we can do that, then we can let some of our employees go to the suburbs, but then we can go after like Topeka and Manhattan. If they only have to come here like once a week, we can be paying them less because then we're, we need to learn how do we compete with the rest of the state and take their employees when the Kansas City suburbs take ours. So I think that's something you all should like start thinking about seriously, because if we just have that pandemic and we're learning, you can do stuff from home, then we could really get a leg up on some of the other cities. And also, we do need to raise all our employee wages to be living wages. Like, you were talking about lifeguards earlier, if they were paid living wages, I don't think there would be a lifeguard shortage. And also, I just have a quick question, is, are we giving any money to Live Well, the organizations that's pushing anti-tobacco on us? I don't know if we are or not, I didn't see anything in the budget about it, but I was just curious, so thank you.
Michael Allman?
Hi, I'm Michael Allman. I have three areas that I'd like to address before staff or whoever gives a response. First of all, on page 58, the position, the new position, sustainability analyst, what department would that person be in? And then secondly, the word sustainability, does that mean that squirrely term like sustainable growth or economic sustainability? Or, I mean, it's played with so much, it really should mean ecological sustainability. And I don't know how it's implied in this case, and I'd like to know. Secondly, the vehicle replacement program in the capital improvements plan, generally vehicles are replaced on a 12- to 15-year cycle. We have 14 years before the city reaches 100% renewable energy. It seems like we ought to be addressing electric vehicles in a lot of our replacements, and the low-hanging fruit I would see, and that would be the police interceptors. There are Tesla cars right now being used in Great Britain and elsewhere that are working very well as police interceptors. But thirdly, during the street maintenance discussion back on May 14th, the mayor had indicated that the commission would like to keep their options open on whether to fund the Atchison Creek Trail in this budget. From all indications, the negotiations with KU and Evergy seem to be going pretty well, although the city engineer has indicated that he hasn't negotiated KU to pay any money to a trail that they have in their 10-year plan. So that funding of $573,000, which is indicated as unfunded in the capital improvements plan, I think we'd better negotiate more strongly, maybe get somebody else to negotiate that with KU so that they pay their fair share for a trail that they've indicated that they want to take place. So that's my comments, and I appreciate if somebody might provide some insights, some answers into that. Thanks a lot.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Chad Osgood?
Good evening. I could be wrong, but I did not hear anything about merit pool funding. I assume that that means there is none. Second, the general wage adjustment that the analyst or the consultant had set up four years ago was supposed to give us a 2.5% general wage adjustment the first year, 1.5% the second year, and a 2.5% general wage adjustment the third year, which would be this year. And you found a nice way of saying that you're going to cut our 2.5% in half by saying it's going to be spread out over two years. But you cut the 1.5% last year to a half a percent. You're going to cut this one in half to what, 1.25%? Do we have any chance of getting that 1% that you denied us last year back? Or is that just gone? I mean, it's just what you agreed to, no reason to follow an agreement, is there? If there was something I could have changed on the budget, it would be funding to the merit pools and 2.5% general wage adjustment in full, not cut in half. And then on the fact that you're losing employees, can you imagine that anybody would want to work here when you tell them this is the way you're treated and this is the way you're going to be paid, and then turn around and do the exact opposite of what you agreed to in writing? But I should be used to that by now, huh? I'm sorry. Have a good evening.
Is there any other public comment on this item? That's all the comment, Mayor.
Thank you Shay, I'll bring you back and maybe ask a couple of those questions, and if I miss some, people can follow in. Just to be clear, is the recommendation a full 2.5% this year and 2.5% again next None of that's for Craig or Danielle or Lori?
This is Lori Carnahan, Director of Human Resources. The 2.5% is a full 2.5% in 2022 and a 2.5% in 2023 as well. And there is, we have separated the structure of the pay plan from the performance at this point in time, as the consultant did recommend until we were able to really fully fund that, that we should do some of our other things first. And we will be working on getting people placed inside those pay grades where they should be, both in '22 and in '23, to finish up the recommendations.
And so, again, I think your second answer was that there is no merit pool, right? Just to be clear, to answer his question.
That, no merit pool for '22, correct.
That's how I understood it. I think I know the answer, but Danielle, someone talk about the sustainability analyst and what department that is in and what the purpose of that is.
Yeah, sure. So it is within our environmental sustainability. So Jasmine Moore is our Director of Sustainability, and so this position would be 100% city-funded and report to her to really move forward the initiatives on those environmental sustainability commitment initiatives that are included in the strategic plan. So it is within that environmental sustainability lens within the budget.
And then, I guess there was a question or comment about moving towards electric vehicles, I assume we'll take that up as we look at vehicles along the way. Then the third question was about the Atchison Creek Trail, any update on that discussion?
This is Danielle Bushcutter. I do not have an update on that particular project. I don't know if anyone else on the staff side can provide an update, but I would have to follow up and report back on that one, I do not know offhand.
Danielle, this is Dave Cronin, City Engineer. I can provide a brief update. We're having conversations with Evergy and KU Endowment in relation to Evergy's special use permit for their pad site there on KU Endowment ground. So we're looking at their engineer, Evergy's engineer is going to look at providing a design that would incorporate our future extension of the bike path that is to the south in the Heatherwood neighborhood further to the north. So they're going to review different options. We don't have details on costs or any plans further to the north of the Evergy project. We do want to start having conversations with KU Endowment on at least... We do want to start having conversations with KU Endowment on at least getting easements that we could build the path in the future. So those conversations are ongoing, and we hope to be able to work together. And if there's some economies to build the trail, we would seek partnership with them on the project.
Thank you. Okay, other commissioners have questions? Comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Chris had a question about whether Live Well Lawrence was funded through this budget.
That's right.
This is Danielle. I am not aware of any programmed funding for Live Well in this budget proposal at this time.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to go back to the electric vehicle issue. Somebody from staff explained to me, are we developing a plan to eventually switch over to electric vehicles for some of our vehicles? We have a plan.
This is Danielle. I would, I saw Mike just popped on, I would pass that over to some of our municipal services and operations staff that will be able to provide a lot more detail on that.
Sorry. Mike Lawless, Deputy Director for Municipal Services and Operations. Right now, we're in the process of developing an RFP that will go out looking for a consultant to help us develop a transition plan from the fleet as it is today to where we want to be in the future, that's more efficient and alternative sources, but yet will still meet the technology that's available today and what we expect to have in the future, as well as look at, you know, planning for that infrastructure that we need to be in place in order to be able to handle those different types of vehicles, whether it be EV or otherwise. And so, right now, we're in the process of developing that request for proposals.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, bring it back to the commission. Comments, questions? Direction for, next week we come back, I guess, to talk about the rates, so.
There was a CIP item I was a little interested in, which is page 32, for those of us that printed it off. It's the Sixth and Massachusetts Street Traffic Signal Replacement, which includes Sixth in Kentucky, Sixth in Vermont, and Sixth in Massachusetts. And I think a lot of us have seen a presentation by a group here in town who's been working on kind of reimagining that whole area in terms of art, in terms of accessibility, in terms of access to the river. And so, I do see here some pretty specific direction from staff that it needs to be updated. I just also want to be sure that we don't, you know, if we get a public-private partnership going, and there's lots of momentum on this, and I feel like there is right now, that we don't buy something we're going to rather had done something different a year later.
I think that's hard to argue with.
Well, Dave Cronin might have an opinion here, maybe MSO does. I don't.
Go ahead, Dave.
Oh, so, Nick, you can probably speak to this, but Dave Cronin, City Engineer. I think the project, the Sixth and Mass signal projects mainly replacing poles and equipment, updating the pedestrian activated signals as well. And so, we could certainly keep open the conversation of tying that into another separate project with that area, but it's more equipment-related and not geometrics or design-related as far as crossings or bridges or that sort of stuff. So it's mainly focused on equipment.
And then my other question, not surprisingly, going to be sidewalk-related. And I'm sure, oh, there he is, Jake's here. The amount of money, and I think it was the same this year, I'm not sure, that you tend to budget for these CIP items for sidewalks, so there's one for each year, '22, '23, '24, Is it the same for every year that you put it here? But I'm unclear what that's based on. As far as I know, we have still not gotten our data back. I think we were hoping to get it in October, and I wondered how you came upon this number.
Jake Baldwin, Attorney and Program Manager. Commissioner Shipley, I'm not sure I have a real good answer for you. I feel like this is the budget that was initially established and we've just been carrying it over. Maybe somebody else can elaborate.
I think that is accurate, and I think, you know, as we continue to move our CIP and our maintenance budgets and vehicle and equipment replacement budgets forward, I think those are the things that we'll continue to review and analyze as we continue this refinement of tying our budget to our strategic plan and our priorities.
Dave Wagner, Director for the MSO.
You muted yourself, David.
All right. My mouse quit on me. Anyway, Dave Wagner, MSO. I just kind of want to add, just a couple of weeks ago, we finally got our information from our LiDAR scans on sidewalks. We haven't had the chance to look at that and implement that, and helping us make some priorities and then getting bigger picture needs that are more accurate, and then being able to, you know, to present the need along with a program that it might take a couple of decades, but gets after some of those issues. And it's not just about sidewalks, but all of the assets. So it's part of that. It's part of that. Know what you got before we can really set priorities in some cases with what we own and what we need to take care of and understand the total need. You know, and I push Jake and some of the other staff to throw numbers out, and boy, are they hesitant, because they know, they know they don't have a foundation for it when it comes to what is the need. But I think we're working on that. I think you'll be, you know, I've said it, I'll probably say it a lot, you'll probably continue to hear, we'll be better off next year in these kind of things than we are this year, but we've got a long way to go. And I'm glad we're headed down that road, and it's sorely needed, but some of the things we're still flying by the seat of our pants, and some of the things, I think, we'll do the best we can with what we have until we can really get good, accurate data and numbers on conditions and assets. So, it's a little broader answer, I think, Commissioner Shipley, than you were looking for maybe, but I wanted to throw that out there for you.
Thanks. Do you have a timeline when you can show us something with that data?
I do not. I know that the teams that are working on that are right now looking at asset management. I know you asked about tracking costs on some of the operations, and as we do that, it'll include better workflow systems than we have today, so we can allocate our costs. So they're stuck in that area right now, and they've got a lot of other asset information. We're really focusing on stormwater hard right now. And for some obvious reasons, you know, that we go where the pains and the people are screaming probably to some degree, not that sidewalks aren't important or all the other assets too, but we're kind of picking there. So, given we've just had it, we have not had a chance to really even unfold it and look at what was presented in that data. So it's going to be a little while, but I really can't give you a timeline, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. I'm not sure who it will surprise for me to say that I would rather, with the lack of data and the lack of another plan that makes it more equitable, I would rather move that money to something else that we need right now. So I'm sure you didn't expect me to say that, but I did. So, but the other thing I wanted to ask about this is, I noticed in a number of Parks and Rec CIP requests that ADA compliance and ADA ramps were part of their needs, and I started to think about that, and I just couldn't remember if Parks and Rec had ever had CDBG money or some of the other sources that we tend to use for ADA ramps and sidewalks, or it seems to me they kind of get used by MSO and planning projects. Do you know if Parks and Rec has been able to access some of those grants for their ADA needs?
Mark Haefer, Assistant Director, Parks and Rec. To this point, we really haven't accessed that funding source, and it might be something we look at in the future. As we look at ADA compliance, you know, obviously, we hired an ADA compliance coordinator to look at just citywide where some of our need for improvement is. So that's what you're seeing in the CIP, is some of those projects we've identified as we look through a different lens a little bit on where we can do a little bit better on each of those facilities.
All right, well, don't let yourself get elbowed out of that money by the other departments. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I just want to echo Craig's comments, but also add Craig to the list of people to thank for getting this budget together, along with Danielle, Jeremy, and the entire team. I know all the effort that went into this. You know, we've been talking a long time about, and some of you longer than I have, about priority-based budgeting, the strategic plan, and making a budget, you know, come into line with that. And, you know, obviously, this is the first step, but it's a very important step, and, you know, I'm excited about it, and excited about all the work that, you know, all our employees have put into that. And I guess I would also add that, you know, the ALPA funds are allowing us to stop moving ahead on our strategic plan in ways that without those funds, we would basically be punting until 2023 or 2024 and, you know, waiting to implement the plan. And so, to be able to jumpstart this and move in this direction and use those ALPA funds for that purpose, I think is exactly, as Craig said, exactly what they were meant to do, and I think it's going to, you know, pay off for us in the long run. This is a long-term project, but if we had to put it off another year or two, you know, a lot of the momentum we have would be lost. So I'm excited that we have a budget that implements that and that we can use those funds in that way. Now, hopefully, sales tax come in strong, hopefully, property tax comes in, and we have some other options with that, but certainly this gives us the backstop to start that process. So appreciate that, and know that we have work ahead of us in the coming years, but we have the strategic plan to guide us, and we'll work with the public and work with our teams to make that happen. So it's an exciting time, so. Other comments before we close the work session? Seeing none, we'll close the work session and move to commission items. Any commission items? Seeing none, we'll go to the City Manager's Report.
Really only one note on this, and that is to recognize one of our Planning and Development Services employees, Adrian Jones, who's a Senior Plans Examiner, has been appointed to the International Energy Conservation Code, Commercial Energy Code Consensus Committee. But these international code council committees are very important, and the fact that we have a contributing member to any of them is significant and speaks to where they're viewed by their industry. So, and it'll also, my experience with having members that participate in these is it really does give us an insight to keep on the cutting edge of what's coming and to prepare for that and understand the why behind a lot of these changes and movements, especially with the energy code changes that have happened over the last several years. So it's pretty exciting and good recognition.
That's a great recognition. Any other questions from commissioners on that item? Is a public hearing item, if any member of the public would like to speak on one of those two items? If you're present, seeing none? Anyone online like to speak to one of those two items? Sher will call upon you.
There's no public comment, Mayor.
Thank you. That takes us to the calendar and the review of calendar items. I would just note, I am going to be on vacation on August 3rd, and so Vice Mayor Shipley, I think you'll be here to run the meeting?
I'll be up.
Okay. Excellent. Any other comments or questions on the calendar? Well, that brings us to adjourn, and then?
Move to adjourn? Second?
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Vice Mayor Shipley. To adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone, see you next week.